I'd like to call the order, the Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 Dana Point City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All members of the City Council are present.
Mr. Munoz, is there a need for a closed session?
Mr. Mayor, first we have... Sorry, I didn't have a complete agenda. First, we have a conference with legal counsels, results anticipated litigation due to the significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 549-56.9D2. We have one case to discuss. Sorry. Next, we have a conference with legal counsel. We'll be conducting a litigation strategy review, which will involve a discussion of existing and anticipated litigation with respect to the existing litigation pursuant to government code section 549-56.9D1 for seven cases. City of Dana Point versus Southern California Recovery Center, Orange County Superior Court case number 30201801012750. City of Dana Point versus Donna's House, Orange County Superior Court case number 30201801011653. City of Dana Point versus Changes Recovery, Orange County Superior Court case number 30201901059862. City of Dana Point versus Wings of Hope, Orange County Superior Court case number 30201901059792. Laguna Beach Silver Living versus City of Dana Point, Federal District Court, case number 8:19CV00024AG. City of Dana Point versus Sunshine Group, also known as Seaside Inn, Orange County Superior Court case number 30201700915900. And City of Dana Point versus New Method Wellness, Orange County Superior Court case number 30201700904169. The anticipated litigation is a result of significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 549-56.9D2. We have one case potentially to discuss. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comment?
Here.
Okay, then we're going to adjourn to closed session until 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting of November 5th, 2019. We will now reconvene our meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Exor. Please remain standing for the invocation. The invocation this evening will be provided by Rabbi Eli Gorovich of Shabbat of Dana Point.
Please rise, face the colors. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Almighty God, we thank you for this great country, I'm sorry, we thank you for this great country that you have gifted us. We acknowledge that we are a blessed nation with a rich history of faith and fortitude, with a future that is filled with promise and purpose. our home, and we proclaim our gratitude for it. We pray for our mayor and city council members, and we ask that you bestow upon them the wisdom necessary to lead this great city, the grace to unify us, and the strength to stand for what is honorable and right. In Proverbs, you instruct us that our leader's heart is in your hands. Gracious God, reveal unto our elected leaders the ability to know the proper path, the confidence to lead us in justice and righteousness, and the compassion to yield to our better angels. While we know there are many challenges before us, in every generation you have provided the strength and power to overcome them. Guide us in discernment and give us the strength to preserve and thrive. Almighty God, make our city an example of how in a complex, pluralistic, democratic society, we can stay true to our nation's founding principles and work together to be a beacon of light for humanity. Let your favor be upon the great city, and we should provide comfort, safety, and stability to all who dwell within it. Let us say amen.
Thank you. There are no presentations or proclamations this evening. That brings us to reading of the ordinances. City Clerk, are there any ordinances or titles to read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one item this evening, and it's item number 10. It is a second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California," amending Chapter 12.08.098 of the Dana Point Municipal Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separation. Madam Clerk, do we have any items to be removed by staff?
No, Mr. Mayor.
By the public?
None for the public. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel? Anything? Do we have a motion? I'll move the item. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Oops, I was going to do that. Getting ready for my public hearings. Okay, that brings us to public comments. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered, oh, that's not, I just did that. Why is that on there? All right, so that brings us to the public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Can you hit your button so it'll come up? It's coming up here for me. Hit your speak button. Okay. The other one. Okay, there you are. Go ahead.
Could I just request that the city attorney just inform people what we were talking about with that one issue?
Okay, I was going to wait for the report out, but you're right, everybody's here. Go ahead, Mr. Munoz, if you'd like to give a report out of closed session.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The council asked me to report out of closed session that in connection with the seaside inn matter, to, just to let the public know that we'll be working on a press release type update that'll be coming out in the next few days to inform the public on what's going on with the status is.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to public comments. We'll have a three-minute time limit per speaker. Our first speaker is Carol Wilson, followed by Nancy Leonard and Julian Joshua. Please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Carol Wilson, Dana Point. I'm here this evening in regard to an article that I read in the Dana Point Times last Friday, and that was regarding the investigation about discrimination against Councilman Lewis and the results of the investigation. I'm here to give you my view, as I was one of the people being interviewed. So I'm not just doing gossip, I'm just going to tell you what happened. I got a letter in the mail asking me to come to the city for a meeting with Christine Exton, and it said that it was a matter that was being investigated that they thought I would have information on. So I called the city council, or the city, and I said, can you tell me what this is regarding? No, we're sorry, we can't tell you what this is regarding. So I showed up for the meeting having no clue in the world what I was going to be asked to talk about, or why I was being called in. And what I found in that meeting was, I was being questioned about the interaction between Councilman Lewis, Councilman Mueller, and some of the other councilmen on the council, and if she was being discriminated against and so forth. Now, coming into something like this when you have no clue of what you're going to be asked, it's pretty hard to be prepared. It's pretty hard to be able to give really straight answers, especially when you're talking about a topic carrying maybe a three-year span. So I did the best I could during the meeting. I found the questions from the Ms. Exton were very biased. Most of the questions were leading with, well, do you think Mrs. Lewis did blah, blah, blah? Do you think Mrs. Lewis used social media to help her cause? Do you think she, you know, caused this to happen? I mean, I felt like I was in like a cross-examination without an attorney, without any evidence, any preparation. It was really badly done. So I did the best I could to try to recall some things. Of course, I didn't have the dates. I didn't have the exact words, because, you know, you're just kind of like taken by surprise. You don't know. So I think that was very ill, that there was no ability for me to give any preparation before that. Then later I found out I wasn't a credible, I wasn't a credible witness. So I did write a letter to her. I want to tell you that I spoke at least five times to the city council on this topic. I wrote at least five letters to the editor. I wrote the city attorney's office. And I sent all that to Ms. Exton, and even with that, even with the dates and the times on the tapes of the meetings where things occurred, this was her conclusion. So I believe it was a biased investigation. I don't think it was fair. And I don't even think it's fair for the city to have had that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Leonard?
Nancy Leonard, Dana Point. The people behind me stand in solidarity with Councilmember Deborah Lewis, somebody who was elected with the largest majority ever in Dana Point's history. Residents throughout the city respect Ms. Lewis for her relentless and passionate advocacy of its interests. When Ms. Lewis filed a formal complaint with the city alleging gender discrimination and harassment and violation of city policy in Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, the city had the duty to conduct an independent investigation. How this complaint was investigated, the process used, including the selection of the initial investigator, fails, in my opinion, in it being conducted free of bias. Further, the written report fails by omission to acknowledge key points regarding the investigative process. I address this with some experience. My public service career includes conducting investigations on sex harassment and sex discrimination complaints for cities throughout the state of California, including testifying in court. The city first hired attorney Megan Miller to conduct the investigation. Evidently, no one thought to determine prior to her hiring if Ms. Miller had a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest with any of the parties. At some point, Ms. Miller admits to a financial gain from the Orange County Fire Authority, of which Dana Point is a member. Mayor Miller, against whom the complaint is made, has served on that board since 2014, and this year, the year of the complaint, is its president. It was not until two months into the investigation that Ms. Lewis is informed of a conflict. So now the city has wasted taxpayer money on an investigator who clearly has a conflict of interest and could reasonably be argued to have a bias in favor of Mr. Miller. But it gets worse. The new investigator, Christine Exton, is provided Ms. Miller's notes and uses the information in her report. This act of sharing information is supposedly addressed in the section called methodology with the one sentence, quote, "The new investigator reviewed the prior interviews." Nowhere in the report does Ms. Exton indicate where she is relying on Ms. Miller's facts and impressions. Nowhere. Ms. Exton, to the best of my knowledge, does not re-interview those persons interviewed by Ms. Miller. Yet, she reports on them as if she conducted the interviews. Let's deceive. Finally, while I'm not privy to the scope of the work the city asked of Ms. Exton, let's assume the city directed her to address witness credibility. How can Ms. Exton speak to one's credibility when she hasn't interviewed the individual? Ms. Exton is employed by Normie Trob and Associates. Had my dear friend and former work colleague Chief Trob been alive today, I would have addressed these issues with him prior to coming to you. I seriously doubt he would have endorsed this flawed work product coming from his office. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Mr. Joshua?
Good evening, councilors. Justice must not only be done, but must also seen to be done. This must be the first time in the history of the city that a speaker has quoted a Lord Chief Justice of England. But I make no apologies, since that famous remark of Lord Hewitt, who wasn't actually a very good judge, but he got it right on this occasion, uttered nearly 100 years ago, and known to all English lawyers and probably to other lawyers who are present here today. They are heard throughout the common law world and beyond. They stand for the fundamental principle, common to all civilized legal systems, that judges and decision-makers more widely cannot hear a case if, from the perspective of a reasonable and informed observer, their impartiality might reasonably appear to be compromised. This is called the appearance standard, and it is crucial for the integrity of all administrative and judicial proceedings. You'll actually find it if you look in the ABA Model Code of Judicial Conduct and in 28 U.S. Code, paragraph 455A, if you care to look at it. To quote from a well-known American case, "Disqualification is required if a reasonable person who knew the circumstances would question the judge's impartiality even though no actual bias or prejudice had been shown." The appearance standard, the principle of appearance of bias is particularly relevant in the Joe Mueller case. The city engaged, we've heard, is the initial investigator in Ms. Miller, no relation, who had in fact done work for the OC Fire Authority, of which Mr. Mueller is the chairman of the board. This was an obvious conflict of interest that disqualified Ms. Miller. There's no doubt about that, because two months into the investigation, the city suddenly in, I'll keep it very short, they wanted Ms. Lewis to sign a waiver, which she declined. Now, I just wonder why it took the city two months to realize that. Now, it's plain as daylight that the first investigator should play no part in this, in the case. Disqualified means disqualified. To take the work product of the first investigator without even clearly identifying it as such in the report makes a travesty of the principle of open justice. Thank you very much. The city owes Ms. Lewis an apology, and to get it right.
Patty Short, please. Is Ms. Short here?
Sorry. Good evening. I'm Patty Short, resident of Dana Point, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce to give you an invitation and a reminder. In just three short weeks, we'll all get the opportunity to eat more than we ever should, and then worry about it. But I have a cure. The Dana Point Chamber of Commerce and Dana Point Harbor Partners remind and invite the community, their families and friends, to the 42nd Annual Turkey Trot. On Thursday, November 28th, there will be a 10K, two 5Ks, and three children's gobble-wobble races. If you register three or more members of your family and/or friends or neighbors, you are welcome to the friends and family discount. On Wednesday, you can visit our Health and Wellness Expo from noon until 6:00, and it will also be open on Thursday morning. A portion of the proceeds that are collected from this race are shared with the Pet Project Foundation and the Marine Corps League South County Detachment. So go to www.turkeytrot.com, register, and you can run the race before you stuff your face. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional public speakers? Okay, go ahead and close the public comment, comment section. That brings us to item number 11, Resolution to Establish the Dana Point Tourism Business Improvement District. Mr. Denny, do we have a staff report?
We do. Kelly Renders has your staff report tonight.
Thank you. Oh, there you are, there.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's hearing is the final step in the formation of the Dana Point Business Tourism Business Improvement District under the Business Improvement District Law of 1994. As part of the adoption of the resolution, you will also be confirming the management district plan. Written petitions in favor of forming the DPT bid have been received, which represent 88% of the total assessments. Attending tonight's meeting is the Chairman of the Board of Visit Dana Point, Jim Samuels, of the Laguna Cliffs Marriott Resort and Spa. We have Ian Pullen, VP of Asset Performance for KSL, who serves, representing the Monarch Beach Resort and serving as Secretary for Visit Dana Point. And we have Jeremy Wilson, Vice Chair of Visit Dana Point, representing Doubletree Doheny Suites. In addition, we have Johnny Westham, who's the Executive Director of Visit Dana Point, and we have Gina Reed from Civitas, who assisted Visit Dana Point with the formation process and management district plan. We are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from counsel at this point? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments? Oops. All right, I'll close the public comments. I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on this item? Mr. White?
I move the item as written.
Ms. Lewis?
I'll say.
Thank you. All right, any counsel discussion on this? No discussion? Wow, this could be really easy. All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All, go ahead and run. Yeah. Tap your screens to activate them. Okay, so everyone voted?
I thought I did. Did I not? Oh, okay.
Okay, that passed unanimously. Congratulations, guys. It extends to a five-year T-bid. All right, that brings us to item 12, An Appeal of Planning Commission Approval for Coastal Development Permit, CDP 16-0014, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 16-0005, to construct a new 51-room hotel and associated parking facilities. The applicant is requesting a lot merger valet and tandem parking, and modified parking garage ramps located at 344-82-Green Lantern within the coastal zone. Mr. Denny, do we have a staff report?
We do. Senior Planner Sean Nicholas has your staff presentation this evening.
You guys, let me turn the mics on, you're going pretty quick.
Let me resee that. Senior Planner Sean Nicholas has your staff presentation tonight.
All right, Mr. Nicholas.
Yes, good evening, City Councilmembers. Sean Nicholas, Senior Planner. This is the appeal associated with the Lantern Point Hotel, located at 344-82-Green Lantern, and the applicable CDP and conditional use permit for it. So before we dive into the more project-specific, I thought it would be important, when we discuss these issues, to start with a city context level. So before you and on the, on the screen there is a portion of our city zoning map, and on that city zoning map, you see a lot of colors, yellow, you see red, you see browns, you see beige, and you also see purple, which is this pretty large swath across here of our city, and that represents the Dana Point specific plan. You also represent, see in this gray, which represents other specific plans in the community. But you can see here, this Dana Point specific plan is involved with a decent portion of the coastal zone within the community. In terms of our project itself, highlighted in red there, you can see that the proposed project is completely located within the Dana Point specific plan outside of the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan. So outside of the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan. So, several of the items that were brought up by the appellant's letter this evening addresses requirements and policies associated with the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan, which are not applicable because, as you can see, it is fully within the Dana Point specific plan. Additionally, just to show the, the standard satellite image, it's important to note, and we'll cover this on a few different occasions, that the Orange County zoning code is the fallback document associated with development standards that are not located within the Dana Point specific plan itself. And the project site is Zone Coastal Visitor Commercial. This is just some images of the site from approximately 2007 through 2017. This is just to show that despite some comments that were made by the appellant, this site is not open space, it's not in zone recreation, is in fact just a pre-graded and maintained vacant lot. It has always been zoned, visitor coastal, visitor commercial, and it is not open space. And from the perspective of the fact that a hotel is the identified primary use of the site, it is an underutilized parcel for that purpose. Some background in terms of how we've gotten to this point, this project in particular was submitted in 2016. We've gone through a number of iterations of the project. In March of 2018, staff conducted a public workshop at a planning commission hearing and provided information regarding a number of the improvements that were proposed on Green Lantern and Scenic Drive. And staff, after in fact, also met with residential groups out on Green Lantern. In July of this year, the project was deemed complete. In August, the applicant did their own public outreach. And then, in, on August 26, 2019, the planning commission did conduct a public hearing and approved the project 5.0 with modifications. And then, the project was ultimately appealed to the City Council. The project components have not changed from that. That was before the planning commission. It's still a 50-room hotel, including 61 parking spaces. It includes 24-hour valet, bluff-top public amenities, as well as affordable overnight accommodations. There are some rooftop amenities. And additionally, it's important to note that there is no public restaurant, there is no public meeting, and there is no public rooftop access for this project. This development, in essence, acts as if it's a 51-room bed and breakfast. So, you have to be staying at the hotel to enjoy the amenities. So, getting into the development standards, the image there in front of you is actually the front page or the cover of the Dana Point specific plan. And I've highlighted that these requirements started and were originally approved in April of 1980. And it's important to note that the land use designations for these sites have not changed since that time. So, even in 1980, all of these sites there in the Dana Point specific plan along the bluff have all been identified as coastal visitor commercial, which the primary use is either hotel or restaurant. The Dana Point specific plan is referred to by Coastal Commission as the I-1986 LCP. And why that is, is because unlike a lot of other coastal communities, Dana Point is an old community, new city. And because of that, we have multiple LCPs that cover a variety of different portions of our community. So, this, the Dana Point specific plan is its own standalone document of general plan, land use plan, land use plan policies, and in essence, zoning or development standard requirements. Again, as I stated, the hotel use is the primary identified use. And within the Dana Point specific plan, it specifically calls to the Orange County zoning code to refer to for any development standards, not explicitly discussed in the Dana Point specific plan. So, staff provided this table to try to make it as simple as we could in terms of compliance with development standards. As you can see there is the list of the Dana Point specific plan and Orange County zoning code development standards. And on the right is the fact that the project is compliant with all applicable development standards. There are no variances requested, there are no exceptions requested. The project does meet all of the required height limits and does provide 10 parking spaces above the required 51 spaces. Additionally, here's an image to show what the project will look like from Green Lantern. As you can see, that is, proposed to be a two-story structure as viewed from Green Lantern. One of the items that were discussed by the appellant in their letter was that it was, this two-story structure was out of character with the neighborhood. And, and when staff looked at it, there is a mix of architectural styles within the Green Lantern neighborhood. And so, the Dana Point specific plan also does not call out a particular architectural style. You can also see that even though the project proposed is only two stories, it's going to be lower than the majority of the other projects. As, as you can see, many of the residential units that are out there are three, four, and five stories plus, as well as you can see in the middle is the approved, the approved facade of the Cannons Hotel. And that's the frontage actually on Green Lantern as well. So, as you can see, does contain three-story elements. Another issue that was brought up by the appellant was the issue regarding public views and impacts of public views. This is Exhibit 8 from the Dana Point specific plan. This is provided to you in your staff reports as an attachment. As you can see here, and I brought up the legend, that there is a number of primary lookout points off the bluffs that are identified in the Dana Point specific plan. As you can see, the closest ones are here that are out there on the Headlands Promontory, over there where the trail is, and going up towards the Nature Interpretive Center. Here's our project site here, and here's some additional locations off of Blue Lantern. The proposed project where the mouse is not working, the laser is working. This is the first time I've had this laser work for me. So, here is our project site. And as you can tell, that none of those identified viewpoints are located on the site. Or does this site impact any of those view sites? So, the public view policies in the general plan, as the appellant has called out, are not applicable. As we've noticed in the last slide, that the, there is no public views on the site or through the site. And then, while not required, staff did request that the applicant look at the public trail amenity, which is a public amenity above the site across Green Lantern. And we're going to look at some photorealistic images that were provided by them. And staff evaluated that and determined that whitewater, blue water, and harbor and horizon views will remain even with the project proposed. And again, it's important to note that no height variances are a component of this project. So, you can take a look here, and this is the existing condition. And the bottom corner, you can see from the, from the footing of the, of the trail there, that the project site and the top of the project sits 35 feet below there from the trail. So, you can see the existing condition. And then, the proposed condition, you still have the whitewater views of the break, you still have the jetty, you still have the views towards the harbor. And, and based on that, staff has determined that there would be minimal impact to the public view from the public amenity. Additionally, this particular site was, was picked, associated with evaluating this, because it was determined that this would be potentially the most impacted site of the trail. There is another outlook point further closer to Pacific Coast Highway that was also evaluated with the project. And images of that site are actually provided as View 6 in your plan books this evening. And as you can see from that point, you can't even see the project site. So, there will not be any impact from that other outlook site closer to Pacific Coast Highway. So, one of the other items that the appellant brought up was Coastal Act compliance. All that is required associated with Coastal Act compliance with the LCP of the Dana Point specific plan has to do with a trail dedication that they have to dedicate to the city, a 10-foot-wide trail easement in perpetuity along the bluff, should the city ever decide to construct it. The applicant is going above that by actually constructing the, the trail, adding benches, telescopes, and binoculars that will be freed for use by the public, as well as coastal access signage to get it public down to that trail, which will then create new public views from that bluff-top area. In addition to the low-cost visitor accommodations, the applicant is providing 25% of the rooms to be held in perpetuity for low-cost, affordable accommodations. And this is consistent with past Coastal Commission approval. So, the fact that they provide the low-cost visitor-serving facility and overnight accommodations, the project is compliant with the Coastal Act. And it's important to note that we have added a condition of approval that is in your resolution this evening, which is consistent with what we did with the WAVE project for the hostel, which was very well-received by coastal staff, in which we conditioned the project to reflect whatever the methodology, because that's what Coastal Commission has provided, is a methodology, that they don't provide a rate. And so, consistent with that methodology that the, the hoteler will have to continually show at certificate of occupancy, and then every three years, consistency with that methodology and/or whatever new methodology they decide to put forward. And so, this is an image just showing those public amenities that will be developed in the public trail, as well as those rooms that will be kept in perpetuity for overnight, low-cost accommodations. Associated with SEQA, the, the appellant felt that the project did not, was not compliant with the Class 32 exemption. Staff did again review the project and determined that there would be no impacts, and the SEQA findings were appropriate as drafted in your resolution this evening. The appellant brought up a number of issues there, which, many of which we've already covered in this presentation. But I just want to highlight that associated with water quality, there is a preliminary water quality management plan that has been approved and is on file here at the city of Dana Point. A final water quality management plan will be completed and approved prior to issuance of any permits, as well as standard conditions of approval associated with SWAPs, BMPs, things of that nature, that we have for any of our coastal bluff developments that we do throughout the community, ensuring that we don't create any impacts to the ocean or into our storm drains. And then, I'd just like to add, geotechnically, there was a full geotechnical analysis that was completed for this project, and it was found to be very geotechnically favorable, that it's bedrock. And so, unlike a lot of other, actually, coastal bluffs, this is a very solid foundation for them to build this development off of. And so, evaluating all that, and we're going to talk a little bit more about noise and traffic. But in terms of the site itself, just being a coastal bluff lot in the city of Dana Point, there are no unusual circumstances that exist. So, as I said, talking just a bit more about parking and traffic, the applicant is required to provide 51 spaces. They are providing 61 onsite. They have included a parking management plan, and there's a number of conditions of approval associated with that as well, including that employees and guests must be parked onsite. There was also a project-specific traffic analysis that was completed, which identified 25 trips at AM peak and 32 new trips at PM peak. This was reviewed, this analysis was reviewed by LLG, Rich Barretto, who is the city's traffic engineer, who's available here tonight, confirmed those findings and also evaluated our cumulative Green Lantern traffic. As, as council knows, we do have, keep continually and updating our cumulative Green Lantern traffic impacts with all of the projects that are proposed out there. And again, found that the project was consistent with those, with those findings and that capacity along Green Lantern and adjacent streets. The capacity exceeds the trips that will be, that will be driven by this project, and there will also be no change of level of service at any of our intersections. There was also a project-specific noise study that was created for the project. The nearest resident is 100 feet away. And at that point, with the rooftop facilities and equipment, it would be determined that it's 32 decibels, which is 23 decibels, below the noise ordinance standard, threshold of 55 decibels. Directly below there on the slide, you can see the required hours of operation, which requires the entire rooftop area to be closed down by 10:00 PM, which is when our noise ordinance switches to a lower-level standard of noise requirements to avoid any potential impacts. And again, there is no public access to the rooftop facilities. There is no public restaurant. In essence, this acts as a 51-room bed and breakfast. And the pool deck area has been designed to sit below the proposed rooftop garden. Again, further screening those amenities and blocking it from the residents on Green Lantern. So, in conclusion, staff has addressed all issues from the appeal in this presentation, and a detailed review of all of those items are provided to you in the staff report this evening. Staff has determined that the proposed project is consistent with all applicable development standards of the Dana Point specific plan, as well as the Orange County zoning code, and that there are no height variances. It does exceed the parking requirement by 10 spaces, and there are no traffic or noise impacts will occur as a result of the project. The proposal is consistent with the Coastal Act, as it's providing both low-cost visitor-serving amenities and overnight, low-cost overnight accommodations in perpetuity. And all applicable findings can be made for the CDP and the conditional use permit, including consistency with the local coastal program, as hotel is the primary use identified for the site. The high-quality materials and design that is proposed in its consistency with the development standards of the DPSB and Orange County zoning code. With that, staff recommends the City Council adopt the draft resolution, which would deny the appeal and approve the coastal development permit and conditional use permit associated with the project. And that does conclude staff's presentation, and staff is available.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council at this point? No? Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Tonight, we have the appellant and the applicant, I'm assuming are here. We're, they're each going to have 10 minutes for a presentation. We're going to start with the appellant. Are they here?
The group that is vehemently opposed to this project. First, I want to address the one issue. It's the height. You talk about, this height clearly exceeds all the existing buildings. It violates height restriction. And it appears that you pick and choose when you want something to be high and when you don't. It's, it's clearly much higher than the chart house. And at the time when the chart house was built, they had to, they had to adhere to the site, the height limit that they had. You talk about the traffic and that it won't have an impact. Now, there's 51 rooms there. That didn't take in one worker, one person that's going to clean the room, the security, the valet parker, they all have to arrive and park someplace. That will have a tremendous impact on the traffic down the street. You did do a traffic study, but you did the traffic study in an effort to see how the traffic on Blue Lantern will affect when it hits PCH. You didn't look at it to see how the effects would be on Green Lantern. There's an estimated that a car will go by your house every 15 seconds. I want you to just think about that. A car going by your home every 15 seconds. You talk about the lack of transparency, and I think that this bothers me the most, is how untransparent you have been. There was never a story pole that was put up, never, ever a story pole. There was one time when the city had the architect firm set up a tent and give snacks to the people that walked by. Just in that time, there was an outrage of people saying, "What's going on? You're ruining this. This, the views are going to be compromised." None of the transparency that should have occurred with community input, with residents' input, was ever done. You also never, ever had a sign that was put up that showed this monstrosity being, what is going to be built, to say "future home of the hotel." Even when you built the Bevmo, you put up a sign that said, "Bevmo." Everybody knew a Bevmo was going in there. We had a chance to talk about it, to see how it was going to affect us. There was no transparency with that, no signage, no community input. Then, we can look, talk about the views. You talk about how the views will be impacted. When you get to the top of the trail, that there is not an impact when you're at the top of the trail. That's a whole trail. That's a whole sidewalk going up where you look out. I've given you pictures of where it is superimposed on the site, and people just walking by on the street. That, that will, that will not be there anymore. Yes, at the top, you'll be able to see perhaps whitewater. I also truly believe that your pictures are not in scale. We tried to do some, if a person's this tall, the building should be this tall. Your buildings are not in scale on your pictures at all. The nature, we haven't even begun to talk about how nature will be affected, because you're going to have all these lights and small decks facing right across from the nature preserve. All of the little animals there, the mouse, all the things that we're trying to save, because you can't walk on that, only stay on the trail, no dogs allowed. But you're going to have people on their decks, I'm sure, smoking. I don't know if they'll be smoking, but they could be. You can have the noise, they'll be out there talking. It's, and the lights just alone, the deck lights that will be on, that will have a great effect. How about the music from the rooftop pool? They say, "Oh, there's no restaurant." Well, they're going to serve breakfast on the rooftop. Breakfast? Oh, that starts at what time? And then, it goes until 10:00. Oh, did they mention there's a bar up there, too? This is a quiet community. There is, the, the noise last night, just from the chart house, they had a little radio going underneath. It echoed. We don't have air. People have their windows open, so there's going to be a rooftop pool, but then, it's going to affect the peacefulness of the community. We have the height, we have lack of transparency, we have terrible traffic congestion. The views are going to be compromised walking down the street, the peacefulness. And it's just, it's a monstrosity. I, it really bothers me. We voted you in. We believed in you. And I actually voted for everyone that's up here. And it is so disheartening to see what you're doing to a community. And that's a beautiful sight. People walk there. And had you been transparent, this... And had you been transparent, this place would be filled with people saying, what are you doing to our town? What are you doing? From here to Laguna Niguel, people come to walk on that and enjoy the peacefulness of our city, and you're really taking it away. And I really appeal to you to stop this. I'm not opposed to a hotel, but 51 rooms and the height is just not right. It's not right for a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Platt, you'll have the remainder of the 10 minutes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah Platt. I'm a new resident, and I was a bit chagrined to find out that there's five hotels planned for Green Lantern, a very small two-lane road that offers some of the most spectacular views I've ever seen in all of Orange County. I've been a resident all my life, with the exception of being in Hawaii, where there are spectacular views. I'm also in public relations and public affairs, have worked for the county, and I do know about the process that very special pieces of land, very special places in our community have. And I'm deeply concerned when my neighbor explained to us that there would be a city council meeting and probably voted for, without a lot of public comment, this 51-room hotel that is clearly higher than anything else on the bluff. Of course, the photos that were shown in the presentation were homes and condos that are on the opposite side of the bluff that are taking advantage of the views, but not on the bluff side. So as Diane was saying, the chart house is a certain level, Cannon's is a certain level. This hotel is not that level. And I would ask the question, how could you put 51 hotel rooms and parking spaces and say there's no noise impact, say there's no traffic impact to this very environmentally sensitive landmass that is probably among the top places where Dana Point residents and people from all over enjoy incredible vistas, incredible nature? And to take the crown jewel of what you are trying to do within the redevelopment district and to tarnish it and just say, yes, this private developer can now take that away from the benefit of the residents and the people in this community, shocking to me. And I would think, and being new to this process, and I don't want to assume anything, but I would say, please take your time. Please don't rush this. This is something you will never get back. My family's been in real estate a long time, and there's one thing you don't get back, and that is land. This land is special. It deserves a special treatment. It deserves some time. It deserves some public input. And it certainly, once it goes away, it will go away forever. And as was said in the presentation, it is benefiting no resident, not one of us here, unless we check into that hotel and pay probably $500 a night, or whatever the going rate will be, and it'll block views forever. You will never be able to see through that hotel. Yes, there might be some trails that are available to a few when you hike down there. Not everyone's a hiker. You know, you watch people with baby strollers, and you watch people with handicap, and they're walking that area all along there. It's beautiful. It's one of the most scenic, lovely, quiet places in all of Orange County. I ask you, think twice before you move forward too quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that'll bring us to the applicant. We'll also have 10 minutes. Cigar Patel?
I'd like to thank the city staff, our architect, as well as planning for all the inputs and the work that in the three years in the making and the shaping of the project that is here before you. This project hasn't been rushed. It hasn't been, has given its time and special treatment. We honestly believe that. Now, private views are the utmost concern of neighbors, and we want to be considerate and mindful of designing, of our design from conception. This hotel, when we designed it, we wanted to minimize the height impact and increase transparency wherever possible. Our team has given a great deal of consideration for reviews, as shown in the public trail study, from six distinct vantage points. These are not, these are accurate renderings that we can present to you, that we have went above and beyond and considered not only public views, but also private views. During our public outreach, we reached out to the public multiple times. I've offered to hike the public trails, looked at the site, gave a presentation and an understanding of this project is not going to block the sun. It's not, it's a small project of 51 rooms and 61 parking. We're not asking for a variance. We're designed exactly according to the specific plan and the Dana Point plan and Orange County plan. We're not asking for any variances, and we want to be good neighbors as well. We want to be respectful, not just of public views, but private views. So we sat down and talked to some residents, and many residents are in support of this project, and unfortunately, they're not all here in front of you, and there are a few individuals that are concerned about the height and scale of the project. But we have height limitations established by the city code, which we are following. Traffic impact, which a car every 15 seconds, I don't know where that information is coming from, but we have traffic studies done by licensed engineers. Transparency, show the project, community input. We did reach out to the community for community input, as well as the last project that we presented about a month ago, we took the community input and removed some of the architectural features to further lighten the mass of the project. And we have over 45 years of hotel operating experience. We've developed the Hilton Hotel in the city of Dana Point, currently is a DoubleTree. And from the ground up, from construction to management to operation, we're managing other properties right here in our neighboring city in San Clemente. And we're a professional company that wants to be part of this community. And as a child, I came to Dana Point consistently, and I have fond memories of this room, just as Richard Henry Jr., the founder of Dana Point, that named this as the only lovely place in the coastlands of California. We'd like to share that with everyone. And we like to also be respectful to our neighbors, and thank you for your consideration with their projects. I'd like to save some time towards the end to address any specific questions, because we did put a great deal of thought and energy and special treatment.
You'll have five minutes for rebuttal at the end.
Thank you.
I'm clerk to any public comments. Our first public speaker is Carol Kelly, followed by Marshall Lekterman, and finally, Steve Haimouli.
Close enough.
Okay.
It's one of those funny Hawaiians.
My name is Carol Kelly, and I live on Santa Clara, and I'm just a concerned resident of the project. What I'm concerned about is, number one, why didn't they have any story poles? If they weren't, if they felt that the height wasn't compliant, why not put up the story poles and let residents show that it wasn't going to be that high? So I'm a little concerned about that. And another thing I'm concerned about is, as you know, the gazebo has been shut down because we've had erosion down by the gazebo, and it's been shut down for a long time. Well, this is very close to where the project is, and on the other side of where the project is, there's Cove Road where pedestrians walk down that road all the time. And I'm wondering about the erosion on the side of the building with this development. Is that going to cause problems? And I think it will cause a lot of traffic with people going down Cove Road and marking people and trucks going up Cove Road. I was there this morning, and I took a long walk, and it is lovely to go up on Green Lantern and to walk by, and you can see all the pretty views. In order to see the picture up there, that was the real high view, and you have to walk about several stories to get to the very top. But if currently, if you're on Green Lantern, you can just walk at the one level, and you see the whole view of the whole ocean. I mean, it's just beautiful. And I'm not against a hotel, but I think it is, it's a tall building. It's the tallest building there is on the cliff at that time, and I just think some consideration should be of that. That's all I have to say. And also, just the danger of the erosion, and if people walk down Cove Road, even the turkey trot, and then there goes all the people running down, there could be some fatal accident.
Thank you. Marshall Lekterman.
I'm a resident of Sea Canyon, and we purchased our property back in 1985. So I've been a citizen of Dana Point for almost 35 years, and I care very much about what happens in the city. Now, with all respect to the people who have objected, I certainly understand and respect their feelings and position, and I don't live down the street. I live in Sea Canyon. But this is in my city, and I would like to take just a minute and bring a bit of credibility to the table of making a couple of points. I work with a company by the name of Marinita Development. We did the Marinita Townhomes right next to City Hall. If you like that project, then maybe the words that I have to say might have a little more validity. But I've been in this business since 1978, and I probably worked with most of the cities in Orange County. I would like to congratulate the planning commission on all the work that they've done over the last years with respect to this particular asset of the city. Been involved with a lot of cities, and I haven't seen this much, really, consideration of a project. And I hear about things from time to time that I'm aware of, but I'm just thankful that there's so much time, effort, and energy that was put into this. So as a professional developer myself, I just wanted to say that I'm very much in support of this project. I can understand, appreciate, and respect how an individual or a group may have a feeling about certain impact. But the fact of the matter is, is that the best thing that could ever happen to that site would be to plant grass. But that's not realistic. And the best thing would happen if there was no more traffic, and no more increase in noise, and no more, and no more, and no more. But there's things to balance, and I'm sure that the city has taken in consideration transit occupancy taxes, the benefit of the city to all of this thing. I just wanted to say, as a citizen for 35 years, that I am pleased and thankful for a project like this that is an asset to the city and my family and the people that will be with us. And that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Haimouli.
Steve Haimouli, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to stand in front of everyone. I'm a, as you kind of tried my name, I'm born and raised in the islands of Hawaii and in the South Pacific Islands of Tonga, east of Fiji, just south of Samoa. Moved here in '99, married a California girl, and decided to raise our family here in Dana Point. Actually, live in the 926-24 zip code in Keppel Beach for about 10 years, and recently moved to Laguna Niguel. I come to you as a, three phases. One, I'm a local. You know, I decided to raise my family, move them 2,500 miles away from that direction at the Dana Point. If we're standing at the site, we could probably, you know, point and get right to my homeland. Two, as a waterman, I am an avid surfer, grew up surfing my entire life, been in the ocean. I come from thousands, a generation of warfaring ocean people. So that's at the core of my concern, my belief in who I am. And third, as a businessman, I am in commercial real estate. I've been in commercial real estate ever since I moved from Hawaii. And I can tell you, being in the development business and the brokerage business, I have never seen a project that has taken so much careful consideration in design, in the implementation of the land, or as we call it in Hawaii, the aina, and utilized that and encompassed it, what we call pono, which is integrating it into a design. I've worked in the city of LA, worked in the inner empire, San Diego, and I just have to really congratulate. And I know change is difficult. Change is life. Change happens. The question is, when change comes, how do you adapt to it? And I've never seen anyone that has erected a man-made structure that's along coastline do what Sager and Shandu, Mr. Patel, has done, from the green roof that I just saw the rendering, which is pretty amazing, because most hotelers would want to turn it into a rooftop deck and, you know, be able to monetize on that, to green walls. When I looked at the front facade of the structure, I've seen bigger homes on the other side of the bluff, right on the beach. So I just wanted to, as a local, as a waterman, congratulate these men on the effort they did. They're taking a parcel, a piece of land that is really not usable, and actually making it awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the applicant, the applicant are both going to have five minutes for rebuttal. First up is the appellant. Do you guys want to use your five minutes for rebuttal?
It just seems to me that we would. It just seems to me that we have just beat on a drum, and I don't know if Richard or Pam, if you want to speak up to, I know you came in late with the pictures to try to, we got our pictures in just a little bit late under the wire to show the obstruction of view, and I don't know if you guys want to speak to anything. But we've made our point. There's, you know, you really just need to look at the height, the views, and they talk about the views. Anybody in a wheelchair, how are they going to get to the top of that structure? It's steps to see the view. So you've just eliminated anybody with a physical disability. You've eliminated anyone with a stroller. You've eliminated anyone to see that view now, because you got to get to the tippety-top of that big, big height way to get up there. And as I said before about the, there's no, there's no restaurant, but there's going to be the pool, you got to think about a pool, the noise at a pool, you've got to think about it all. Really do think we've covered it well. There's also been a letter that's been submitted that you can look at as well, from a group that is helping with the legal aspects of this. So, you know, why just continue to beat the horse? It's wrong to go as high as you're going. And if you put your head on your pillow tonight and you approve this, you're doing a disservice to this town and to the people in it. And I appreciate how hard people have worked at it, but you're not thinking of the residents, you're thinking of the income and tourists, and we are the people that live here every single day. And hate to say, you don't want people to move either. Views, height, and nature, you really need to look at that. It's being compromised.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. We've pretty much addressed the majority of the concerns with excellent presentation. I don't think I can top that. As far as heights, we've considered the heights. As far as nature, we've looked at native landscaping. We consider the impacts on nature. We looked at bio swells and when it rains and how much water is going to be contained and how it's going to flow. We really went above and beyond in this project, not just the implementations as far as the business itself of operating a hotel, but the public amenities, the access to the trails, the binoculars, the bicycles, and being a positive impact for this community. And I understand and I respect a few residents, and if I was living there, I would have, hey, I don't want to see this monstrosity and against my views. But realistically, when you're here, you have to make a judgment and then understand what is in the best interest of Dana Point. And clearly, this project is good for the, for our community, good fit for the location since 1989. And since 1989. And I think it's a home run, the site. And we're, we're an operator that is considerate of our neighbors. And with all due respect, we're doing our best to minimize our impacts in every single aspect from increasing our transparency, reducing our architectural elements to redesigning and working with a third-party architect with the city, going over three years of back and forth with different, different conceptual designs. And honestly, we're here today with, with a great deal of consideration. And I look forward to being part of this community once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the staff for any final comments. I don't believe we have any. Okay. And then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'll call for a motion on this item. Mr. Wyatt.
I'll move the item.
Okay. Are you moving staff recommendations?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm moving staff recommendations.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Vixor.
Well, second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. I'll open it up for council discussion. Mr. Federico, would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the appellate, the applicant and the staff in particular, the appellate and the, the staff for being engaged and really looking hard at this. One quick question for staff. I think there's a semantic issue about traffic impact. For a resident, another car is impact. Every car that goes by is impact. Can you explain very briefly traffic impact from a planning and engineering point of view?
So as we stated earlier in the presentation is that there will be an increase of traffic. So sitting here, you will see additional trips in the morning and additional trips in the afternoon, yes. But we do have thresholds in which we have to evaluate in terms of impacts thresholds. Every street has a capacity in which it can, can, can take that capacity in those trips without creating impacts to intersections, that stop signs, that people are waiting longer before they can make certain vehicular movement. So in terms of this project, yes, you will see additional trips. We, we've stated that. Is it over a threshold of significance in terms of a negative impact to impacting our streets? Is it going to negatively impact capacity of those streets? Is it going to negatively impact the level of service of any of the intersections directly adjacent to the site out to Pacific Coast Highway and down the Cove Road? No.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Mayor, ask a couple of questions of the applicant. A couple of questions for the applicant.
Would you like to come up?
Just a couple of quick questions about the conditions of, of use that the, the planning commission and the staff came up with. First is the, 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 the walking trail, the trail in the, in the downslope part of your property. How is that accessed?
That's access from, we actually have a photo if I can show you.
Yeah.
We can present a board with a bird's eye view. There's a, basically there's an access from the front of the site from Green Lantern. There's a staircase going down as well as elevators for ADA purposes to give access to the rear of the site. But we have a photo to further. So where you see here, these are the staircases that you see going down to the rear of the site. And this is the elevator shaft in, in case anyone has some sort of disabilities, they can, they can also enjoy those views.
Okay. So, uh, thank you. So it, it can be accessed directly from Green Lantern without actually going through your lobby along the side of your property.
Elevator, you have to go through the lobby.
Okay.
But the staircase is.
But you, okay. But in, and it is.
It's available from the public.
And it is accessible by elevator?
Yes.
Okay. Also, we've talked, it says in there that should the county city ever be able to change Cove Road and make that more pedestrian friendly, that you will grant easement for us to try to tie into that from Cove Road as well?
Yes.
And, and you're willing and able to do that? Should that ever come up? Uh, and then the parking plan. Your parking plan says that you'll have three valet parking attendants during peak hours and that all guests and employees will park on site. Is that true?
Yes.
And are you willing to commit to consent to allow city staff to come check on that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I might come check myself one day.
Okay, yeah, definitely. So hotel operations, they're usually offered, operating in a three different shifts, an AM, PM and a night shift. And they're operating in a staggered method in, in that, that we don't decrease on the level of service as well as upset the flows of the ins and outs in the traffic layout. So our, our staff's cross-trained. You know, you have housekeeping in the morning and then at evening time you have lounge accessibility. So that shouldn't be an issue at all. We have over 45 years of professional management experience as well as, you know, Blue Lantern Inn, which is right around the corner. Four Sisters Inn, they're a specialized group that works with boutique, bread and breakfasts along the coast of Orange County. And they actually manage a property here in town. And, you know, between the both professional experience, experts, we have more than sufficient. There's no concern.
Are you saying that the same operator, the Blue Lantern Inn is going to operate the, this project?
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting to hear. That's, thank you. That's all I have for questions for you. You may want to stay there because other council members may. My final comments for, for the council and the public is it, it seems to me that the goalposts were set on this piece of privately owned commercially zoned land in 1980 and then approved by the Coastal Commission 1986. We've all been very lucky and, and fortunate to be able to look over that piece of privately owned commercially zoned land for a long, long time. I stood on Green Lantern the other day in preparation for this. And from the sidewalk of Green Lantern, I'm pretty confident that the, the views that we're all thinking about and enjoying go away with an eight-foot tall, one-story building on that lot. If you stand at the chart house on the sidewalk and look, it's, we, you lose the view of, of the, of the harbor that we're used to seeing. And while I realize it's, it changes never fun, I feel like the goalposts were set a long time ago. And it seems to me like this project goes through the goalposts. And I just don't see how it would be fair for us to move those at this point. So thank you all. That's Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Federico. Ms. Lewis? I don't know. Okay. Do we have Mr. Vixor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, of course, I took a, a very close look at the project and reviewed all, everything that was filed here, specifically the objections that were put forth by the appellants and their lawyers. And then of course I read the, what I'll call the rebuttal to those points and how those points were addressed. I was actually hoping perhaps to hear the, the appellant's thoughts to the reply. But unfortunately, the, the, those attorneys are not here tonight. So I will simply say, and some of these will echo what Councilman Federico said, but this, this land has been zoned for a hotel since 1980. So, I mean, this is not a surprise that this is the project for this site. As you heard, it's taken over three years to come up with something that is in compliance with the zoning. No variances were requested. This is not, this is not a city project. I heard it said that, how is the city doing this? This is a private piece of land. This is not city land. This is not the city putting this project in. And I, I guess, again, in a nod to Councilmember Federico, it would be moving the goalposts at this point to, to deny the project in essence. So having said that, I, I'm not sure how I could vote to uphold the appeal. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Wyatt.
So first let me ask staff a question. So you said the primary use of this was designated hotel. And other uses that would be, you know, primary alternate uses of hotels are?
Restaurant as the primary uses.
Okay. So hotel or restaurant, those are really the choice, the typical things that this lot would be used for.
Those are the two identified primary uses, yes.
Okay. So traffic-wise, noise-wise, if you live nearby, which of those do you think would be the least impactful to your neighborhood?
Fortunately, I, I'm sure that the residents have expressed their concerns about both. I can tell you again, just from the viewpoint of staff, we have capacity in the streets, capacities there. And this is not only just looking at this project individually, but all development improvements that are perpetually proposed or have been approved already along Green Lantern. And associated with noise, we did take very special care and attention to look at the fact that they were proposing rooftop amenities. That's why I specifically, staff specifically requested that they provide a noise study that looked at that issue and that noise generation from that roof of types of things based on their, their potential uses of the site. And as they've laid it out in terms of the deck space and the pool space, how that would potentially impact the residents. And that's why through those iterations, the design has been changed and those have been set down. And then as we found with those modifications they've done over the years, that there is less than a substantial impact associated with noise on it. So I would say in terms of the review and what staff can evaluate, again, yes, there will be additional parking. Yes, there may be some additional noise. But in terms of the, the project itself, long-term, it's well within the thresholds in terms of a compliant project.
Yeah. I'm sorry. That was helpful information, but it didn't actually address what I was trying to get at, which is if you build a restaurant there versus a hotel there, which of those two are likely to have the most traffic, most parking and most noise impact?
Yes. So I'm sorry, I did not realize that. So a restaurant is, is a much higher driver of traffic because of the ingress egress in terms of turnover of tables, as well as arguably potentially noise. And that depends obviously if, is there going to be an outdoor component to it? And then the hours of operation, obviously there can be a sense of what that would look like with the existing chart house. But in terms of definitely traffic will be a much higher impact associated with hotel because, as I believe Rich Bredo would tell you, typically when people go to a hotel, they're, they're there, they're stagnant. Now, there might be those who go out to dinner or go and, go out and visit the community. But as we've seen changing times of transportation and how that's functioned and/or even utilization of their vehicles, it's hotel use is a much less intensive in terms of traffic than a restaurant use.
Okay, thank you. Well, the other, I guess, and just in terms of comment, the chart house has been held out in terms of height as a comparison. But I walk that street multiple times a week anyway. And I know that even though the chart house parking deck is at street level, you do not have any views from the sidewalk over the chart house. They're, they're completely blocked. And in fact, even the house, so the only place you have views on walking that street are where there are empty lots. So I, just because of, you know, of extending the deck outward, it blocks the sloping view. So your, your view isn't there. So I agree with the comment here that, you know, a one-story building or a two-story building from the street side in terms of what you can see from walking, basically identical. The, I guess my, my concern in terms of, of considering this is, as we've had many discussions here about zoning and, and property rights, and basically my position's been fairly clear that the zoning sets the property rights, whatever it's zoned to allow when you buy it, you should know. And if you buy next to it, you know what's zoned to allow next to you. And changing the zoning or overriding the zoning basically is, is either changing the property rights of the person who you took it from and, and granting it to a neighbor. So property rights issue, this, this, these rights and what you could build there and the profile and the, and the rules under which you can build were set in 1980 to 1986, as we already said. The, we haven't asked for any variations to that. So I don't actually know that we have any cause to look to, to keep them from doing what they were clearly permitted to do when they bought the property some time ago. So I think that's a, a thing that, you know, of concern in just in, in doing this. I will say though, in terms of access, I probably on dozens of locations have pointed out to people who are trying to take pictures from the street, how the path to behind the chart house goes down to allow you to get to the bluff access and be able to see because it's not, unless you walk up to where that stairway down is, and there's a little sign on it that says public access, you would not know that there were public access. So when you're driving down the street or walking down the street and doing that as a visitor, you wouldn't know. So there's one thing that I actually think we should do both with this property and go back and ask the chart house, which is make it clear that there's a trail back there and it's public and you can go back and access it and you can spend time there and enjoy it and take pictures and, and have a picnic if you want. So I think we, we need to make it clear on the sidewalk and above that, that there's public access there. I want to come back to your question about traffic. So the, this street, as you drive down up from the PCH toward Cove Road, on the, on the right side of that street, basically away from the harbor, it's residential, a multi, multi-tenant residential as I understand it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the left side where this property is, is, is commercial visitor, visitor serving?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The street, is that street commercial?
In terms of the
Of traffic.
The classification of Green Lantern.
If we could ask Rich Bredo to come up to the podium just to try to answer some of these traffic questions, that'd be helpful. Rich Bredo works for Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan. Just to clarify, he's not the city traffic engineer, but he's the consultant that reviews development projects for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember. The classification for Green Lantern is a collector street. So it serves both residential and commercial just by the, the, what type of development it currently exists on there.
Okay. So the volumes that you, typically when you're doing a traffic study, the volumes that you would look at as maximum expected on that street basically are based on that categorization, that correct?
Absolutely.
Where if it were residential, you would have a lower traffic volume?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So what we're really looking at is the delta in the traffic volume over, you know, what we today and every one of the projects that are two other, or at least two other empty lots on the harbor side of that, that have it, time to time at least surfaces could be built or somebody interested. You have to then add those two when they come to the traffic study to decide on your volumes, right?
We have, we, staff has taken into account the existing projects that we are aware of that it's either come through in terms of some kind of preliminary review or a formal application. And that's what's been included as part of the cumulative impact. Should a new project in essence come online for perhaps the, the redevelopment of the non-conforming residential use on the bluff side, that would be, have to be taken into account at that time, once we get an understanding of what the applicant may be proposing. But at this time, it does reflect the cumulative impacts and the fact that there is capacity for that does reflect all of the proposed developments for this, for Green Lantern, including the Wave, including the Five Star, the Cannons, this project and potentially the other small hotel on the other side.
There's also a hotel planned on the inland side directly across from this, right? There's an empty lot there that has a preliminary 90-room hotel planned for it.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And that hotel has restaurants. And as I understand it, and possibly conference capability, is that correct?
So we have gotten some very So we have gotten some very, very preliminary programming ideas for that site. Nothing formal has been applied to us, and actually, we have not received anything recently within the last year on that. I would say the last iteration included all of those items in which you have discussed. And then as with all the other projects, the analysis, the cumulative analysis will be updated to reflect, to make sure that's done. And then a project specific, once we have a project at the site, we will get an updated project specific analysis, and then that will be utilized to then further update our cumulative impact. But tentatively based on 90 key restaurant and other types of amenities such as that, yes, that's been included in the, the cumulative impact as it sits today.
Okay, so do you, now coming back, do you know where we are today on traffic versus, versus capacity of that street?
Yeah, so when we look at current conditions, even from a summer and non-summer weekday and weekend conditions, we're at that LOS, you know, really good LOS, LSC, no worse than that. And even with these smaller projects, I think I'll jump on top of what Sean talked about, that when we do trip generation for these hotel projects, we're presuming full-service type hotels, so to provide a conservative analysis. So for instance, for this type of project where it doesn't have restaurants, conference rooms and whatever, what we, what you would typically see is probably even fewer trips because all the trips associated with this type of hotel are related to employees and guests. And not a lot of, not a, not, and especially if the hotel component and the restaurants aren't open to the public, you don't have any people drawing into that. But when we do these type of analysis, especially at the beginning, when the project's not defined, we're, we're, we're assuming a full-service type hotel, so to provide a conservative assessment. So the capacity of the street, you know, right now, it's in an A condition on a 24-hour daily basis. And when you even look at a weekday peak hour, I was just taking a look at some of my notes earlier, in the morning peak hour between, if that's any time between seven and nine, you're prob, on a weekday, you're getting less than 50 cars over that one hour. Again, granted, you know, when, when, when you're a resident who lives on a street, you're not concerned only specifically about the one hour, it's how many cars go along the street on an hour-by-hour basis. But on traffic studies, we really focus on the highest of the weekday commute hour, which is somewhere between seven and nine and four to six. And then on top of that, during the PMP hour, we're less than 100, 100 trips down there as well. So we're well within the capacity of what that street is supposed to carry, given it's a collector, it's not a, it's not a street that's only supposed to carry residential traffic, it's used as a, as a, as a, another alternative access to via Cove Road down to the harbor. So it's functioning the way it should be, from a collector's standpoint, servicing not only residents but also commercial-type traffic.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure, let me ask a question back of the applicant here. So basically, the question came up about the serving breakfast and a bar on the, on the top back, right, on the deck?
I'm sorry, what was that?
There was a question about, or there was a comment about the fact that breakfast is served and, and, and there was a bar. To my understanding, those are not public facilities, right?
No, sir.
You can't just go in to buy breakfast or go to the bar, right? You have to be a guest there or
Yes, it's a guest amenity, it's not open to the public to
Okay, thank you. That's all I have at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Okay, so I guess, since we were talking about some traffic, there's going to be another hotel at the end, right? Big, bigger hotel, 90 rooms. The wave is coming in, and then there's some empty lots where those are zoned for hotels as well? So does the parking or the traffic study take into account what's going to happen when all of that is built?
Yes, that's the cumulative traffic impact study that we, that we're continuing to update, and actually, we started looking at this when the wave came forward, seeing that we were going to potentially have all these projects lined up. So starting back then, we started the process and had LLG to begin that analysis in cumulative effect to make sure that, again, some of these capacity questions and items that we're talking about, that we're not going to cross that threshold. Again, as we've gone through forward with the cannons and now with this project, as we get the project-specific analysis, we go back and review that cumulative impact and make sure that that is still, those findings are still consistent, that that hasn't changed. And again, it's continued to not modify, that it's still capacity and as well as a level of service at A on the street and applicable intersections.
Because this is a two-lane street, right?
Yes.
And in addition, you have all the traffic going to the interpretive center there, right?
Yes.
And is that taken into account in the traffic study as well?
Yes, in terms of the level of service and how that would be impacted in trips on there.
Right.
And full capacity, yes, all of those amenities and components are all taken into account.
So I, I saw plans, sorry, didn't mean to make you stand there. Saw some preliminary plans for Cannon, and it, it's above street level also, right? How tall is that one?
So that is, sorry, there you go. That has been approved, and it has been approved at 35 feet as viewed from Green Lantern. It'll be three stories and 35 feet.
So it'll approximately be the size of the hotel that we're talking about tonight?
It'll be taller from Green Lantern. The Green Lantern elevation on this is, I believe, closer to 28, I believe, off the top of my head, it's below 30, I know.
So the building itself will be 35, but it'll be
As it steps down.
And a street that's, it's, the street's going up, right?
So
From this hotel.
So as the street, because the, the lot actually slopes down into the side towards Cove Road.
Right.
And so at the top, it will only appear two stories from Green Lantern, and that's why at that point, as you measure the height, it's only about 28 feet, as I said, from the sidewalk, if you will. And then as it steps down, because it connects with the backside, and I can bring up some images to help perhaps, but it steps down and then eventually does hit that 35-foot limit, probably about mid-structure, it hits the 35, and then it starts, the building starts to step back, so again, it's lower than the height limit.
Okay, and when we, we're talking about Cannon or we're talking about
No, this project.
Okay, so I was, I was kind of trying to compare it to Cannon has been approved.
Yes.
And in terms of height, what are we looking at with these two? Are they roughly about the same height?
At the peak, at the peak point, they are the same height.
And from the street, are they?
From the street, they are, they, this project is lower from Green Lantern than the, than the Cannon's project will be.
Okay, and the Cannon, oh, yes, I did see that, thank you, but, okay, so I have a spatial, so I have a spatial thing, so I, you know, trying to put all this in perspective, and I completely agree with you on story polling. It just makes me crazy that we don't have story polling, because we're constantly here trying to figure out, you know, how tall is this, how tall is this? I brought this to the planning commission a couple, a year and a half ago, and it was just shot down. And this is, this is why we need it. So I completely understand about story polls, I wish we had them. So now the, the two empty lots, they're also zoned for 35 feet from, from the Green Lantern Street.
So by two empty lots, I'm assuming these are the ones on the bluff also facing the harbor, correct?
Yes, one next to Cannon, I think.
So there's that slope, yes. All of that whole area is all zone commercial, visitor commercial with the same 35-foot height limitation.
Okay.
Including also the existing non-conforming residential and the vacant parcel adjacent to Cannons, as well as the Cannon site.
Right, so that existing non-conforming, that's that little
Yes, residential, yes.
Yeah. And did you say Cannon's been approved by whom? The coastal commission, the city, both?
I believe that the, when the, when the, would you say Cannons was approved?
Yeah.
Cannon has been approved by the city, and they're at the coastal commission addressing a few items through that.
And was there any appeal or objection to that?
No, it was approved by planning commission 5-0 and was not appealed.
Okay, so we didn't have any residents come and object to that? Let's see here.
Well, to be clear, residents spoke at that item, both for and against the project, but they did not appeal the project.
Oh, okay, so they were at the planning commission?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the planning commission approved it?
5-0, yes.
And then it, that was the end of it?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody brought up erosion on the side of the buildings, has that been something that has been taken into?
So we, there has been an extensive geotechnical analysis that has been done for this parcel, and I can tell you that, that it has been found to be bedrock throughout. It's actually one of the more secure coastal bluff lots that we have in the community so far that we've come across, actually. And so based on that initial analysis, which is very detailed, I'm sure the applicant hasn't been too fond of probably having to pay for that. And then we also still require additional studying and additional measures after the fact, as we're, before we even start construction, during the construction document phasing. But in terms of the, in terms of the geotechnical stability of it, staff's determined that it is very stable and are not concerned about erosion.
Okay. And I think we went through the disability question, and so it's all accessible ADA, they can go all the way to the top, okay. Let's see. So the restaurant brought up that, that it was only for visitors, I mean, only for guests and visitors, it's open from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes. Like breakfast hours, you spend the night, you wake up in the morning, enjoy breakfast, enjoy the views and get on the city.
So is there food being served, available to be served from 8:00 to 10:00?
Yes, yes, for breakfast.
So yes, in terms of private view, I totally get that that's an issue. And completely sympathize with that, a vacant lot is much better. But I have to deal with the confines of the law here. California, since around the 1880s, in a Supreme Court decision, said Californians do not have a right to a private view, except for some limited circumstances, one of which being a city ordinance, which Dana Point does not have at this point, although I would like one, but we don't have one. So while I understand private view is something that we, none of us want to lose, this is what we're paying for when we buy here, I do agree with the other council members in terms of, this is how it was zoned, this is how it has been zoned since the 1980s. Why it zoned on this little street with all these hotels, I can't tell you, but that's what we have here. And it is within the requirements of, just lost my, it is within the requirements of the zoning code, and apparently, other hotels will be the same heights. And I did look at the code, I think it's, might get my computer up, 9.05130, I think, that talks about fitting within the character of the neighborhood. And I went there today and I looked at the neighborhood, and in fact, I've looked at that neighborhood for a couple of years when that one house was for sale. And I find that that neighborhood, honestly, it's kind of a patchwork of character. I, I can't say it has a design, I can't say that, you know, this design is in or out of character with the neighborhood, because it, it seems to be a very flexible character, shall we say. And in terms of mass, architectural style, I didn't find the architectural style to be unusual, that it stuck out, that it looked different. The houses on the other side are very modern, multi-story tiered into the hillside. The Cannon looks like it's going to be, you know, it's look, this is, this is something that seemed to fit in with the character of the neighborhood for what it is. And in terms of, of a hotel, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you could do better in terms of, if this is zoned for a hotel, and you're putting in a hotel that doesn't have meeting rooms and doesn't have, doesn't have places where there's venues, doesn't have meeting rooms, doesn't have a restaurant, I, I think it's as good as a hotel can be in an area where across the street there is going to be residences. And I did look there, and this, I mean, this one in particular is over on the very edge. Now, when you start moving towards Cannon and those vacant lots, you know, I, I think that's, that's going to be more impactful. This one, I see over on the edge, you're looking down this envelope and you, you hit the bluff before, and, and that's impacting the view to the, directly to the ocean, and it, it appeared to me that the, that your project is within that envelope.
That's correct, as you go up the bluff, the bluff blocks the entire site, it just merges with, the landscape merges with the ocean, and we have renderings at six distinct specific locations to show that.
Which is something that I found persuasive for me to vote for the, the wave as well, because it had that large hill there. So people trying to get views, they were going to have that regardless of what was there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, but I did notice there's landscaping, there's trees, and then there's stuff on top of the, of the rooftop.
What do you
Looked like, looked like some sort of garden, I saw pictures where
Oh, yeah, the green roof?
Yeah.
Yes, the living garden. So we're using indigenous plants fro, from the area on the roof. So the private view is going beyond just the public views, but if I was a resident living across, how do I minimize the impact of any development? If I'm a resident, what kind of view would I want to look at? And that's what we kind of looked into when we were designing this hotel and says, if we can get the natural landscape to blend with this ocean view, it would be a win-win situation for our community, our neighbors, and, and all-around solution for, for everyone.
So my question is, is there height restrictions of that landscape? Because when you put a tree in front of a hotel, you know, it starts out at the roof level, but in 10, 20 years, it's going to be big. So is part of the condition keeping landscape to a, say, the height of the, the roof?
I would tell you that in terms of the trees, there's no condition of approval associated with maintaining the, the tree pallet at a certain height. In terms of the rooftop garden, the natives that they're plant, that they're proposing are typically low-level plants, and we've required that, as required by the code, it can't exceed, nothing on the roof can exceed 35 feet, and if it's within the purview and interest of the council, they would like to add a condition of approval regarding maintenance to ensure that those plants do not exceed the 35-foot high limit point on the site. That's within your purview this evening to do so.
Okay, so we could add a condition that the, the plants up on top wouldn't exceed the 35, and the trees in front would not exceed the 35-foot height of the roof?
That's something for the council to discuss, that would be an option.
And how would you feel about that?
You know, I, I, we've been working for over three years, we've been working diligently and hard, and we've been looking at even native species, we talked to one of the community residents I actually touch bases with, and she's really into the natural indigenous plants, and so we try to incorporate those ideas into this, this plan. But with mother nature, things, things grow, and it's, it's a difficult condition, but it's something that we can do, we can chop the trees down or transplant another tree, but I don't think that's economically sound or environmentally, you know, if you have a tree that's growing to remove and, but we, we can comply with that if, if that's, if that's a necessity.
Because you could plant trees that could be top versus trees that can't be, right?
I am the last person you want to get any kind of landscape advice from, to be completely honest with you. We do have a third-party landscape architect who, if the project is conditioned that all the plans will be reviewed and approved by them, and also will be inspected by them to ensure compliance. So I would say the tree species, if you were to put together a condition, I'd recommend that the applicant's landscape architect work with our, the city's third-party landscape, landscape architect to develop a plant species that would be within the the height limits, the 35-foot height limit, and ensure the native drought-tolerant plants on the roof are planted in such a way and maintained to not exceed the 35-foot height limit. Something to that extent might be possible and functional to work within and, and address the issue.
Okay. Let's see, if I had anything else here. No, I think that's it. So I, I would want us to discuss that issue, the landscaping, because we're all aware of the height and the view and the 35 feet, but if you put a 50-foot tree there at some point, you no longer have a 35-foot building. So I would like for us to discuss that.
To get discussion, you need to make a motion.
Okay. I, uh, move that we discuss landscaping as part of the conditions for approval.
Is that a substitute motion?
Uh, no, that was a whole new motion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor if you wanna discuss, and we're have to have a substitute motion.
Well, we couldn't have up to two motions.
You have to make a substitute, or, or amend the motion, if you'd like to mi- add an amendment to it.
Okay, well, did, did you?
Mr. Wyatt, let me turn that on.
So based on that comment here, I would, uh, uh, make, I would amend the motion on the floor to add that the, um, landscaping, uh, on it and the plants cannot exceed the 35-foot envelope that's set for the building as, as, um, a proposed amendment. And I think, by the way, this isn't the last time this discussion is happening, as we look at view ordinance for the city, which, you know, is in discussion, then the height of the landscaping versus, I mean, right now, we have building heights in order to protect views, so we don't have tree heights. So I made this-
You have amended motion.
I have amended motion.
The secondar of that motion was effectively Councilmember Exor, the original motion. Do you accept the amendment?
Yes, he was the, um-
Do you wanna, do you, you accept the amendment, or do you wanna withdraw your second? Somebody has to second the am- the amended motion. Okay. Ms. Lewis, you'd like to second that?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
So now, can we discuss it, or how do you wanna do this?
Yeah, we can discuss it. Mr. Denny, you have some-
Just if it's helpful to the council, um, the image on the cover of your book shows total of six palms at the front of the property. The actual landscape plan on page 24 shows five. It also shows, uh, three, what are called, uh, Brisbane boxes. Those trees are depicted on page 27 of your book. So I think the, what you're talking about is a total of eight trees on the site. All of the other plantings are basically, uh, low-scale shrubs and, uh, ground cover that would not impact the views. It's just these eight plantings that you're talking about.
Right, and, oh, can I just talk? And then there's, um, some shrubs, some living garden on the top. So I would-
Very small scale.
Yes.
Less than human scale.
Yes, they, they are small scale, and I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the approval, so it's in the landscape plan at this point, is what you're saying. Okay. So we just need to deal with the trees.
The motion that Mr. Wyatt just made really affects eight trees that are depicted on page 24 of your plan.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Wyatt made the motion. Go ahead, start. Let me turn you on.
Yes, my, um, my belief here is, we've started to investigate the possibility of having a view ordinance, uh, in the city. We currently, um, have building heights and, 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 and try very hard to make sure that they're not, uh, uh, that nothing's above them because that's really where we base the primary thing that will block views. But it, but we haven't dealt with landscaping that comes along with that and new things to block views. So if we start to look at that and we started to talk to the various landscapers and stuff about putting together pellets of, um, of, of trees and plants that, uh, basically would stay within the height limits of the building so that we didn't have, uh, plants towering over the top of the buildings and, and taking away the fact that we held the building heights down. So I think we're, that's, that's already under consideration as we try to figure out what we do to make this a more livable city. Uh, so I think asking that on this property, uh, is a reasonable ask, uh, and I, and I think it's doable. I think the landscaper, uh, and, uh, will, will, will come back and tell you exactly what you can do and how we've been maintained. So I happen to, uh, I happen to live in an HOA where, uh, you know, we deal with trees and we, we like them, but we have the same issue of how to keep the tops of them down. So I know that landscapers are, uh, are, are pretty knowledgeable, and I think this is not an, an unreasonable ask of the property.
Anyone else? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Yes, I would just second that, that since we're literally starting with a blank slate, we should, we could, uh, require that trees be picked that either can be maintained at that level or through maturity don't get higher to that level, but I think that is reasonable. And as Mr. Wyatt said, the buildings have a height requirement, and it doesn't do us any good if we then put in a, a bunch of trees that obliterate those views. So being sensitive to that, I, I think that that would be a good idea, and if you're amenable to that, that would be good. Thank you.
Mr. Exor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a question. You, you said you're amenable to that? You're amenable to that, to limiting the trees? Okay, I mean, cause my question was, how high were you planning on letting these trees go?
You know, I, I honestly, it's general, you know, general tree heights, it's not something we really spend a lot of time specifying the heights of the trees. But, uh, you know, there is sizable heights within 35 feet, it's reasonable.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Federico? Anything?
Yeah, I, I'm not a landscape architect, and I, while I do understand, we don't wanna have a wall of trees that goes to 50 feet here, uh, you know, like 35, 36, I'm not sure that, that it'll look better without breaking up the skyline a little bit, but if the, if the applicant is okay with it, then I guess I am.
Okay. This kinda took a turn for me. Uh, it's kinda nice, you know, to go last, cause they've asked all the questions I had. This is kinda going down a slippery slope for me. This is a, this is more of a discussion about view ordinances, and it was actually brought up as a view ordinance. Uh, I'm not okay with that right now. We, we've had that down at Planning Commission, where I'm waiting for them to come back, uh, with their recommendations. I think this is more of a good neighbor. If, if you would like to do that a, as part of your project, I think that's great, and you, you can put anything into your contract you want. And if you'd like to state that, I don't know that it's a good idea for this council to sit up here right now while we have a viewer and it's being investigated by our Planning Commission to start placing landscape view restrictions on individual properties as we're waiting for that to come back. You know, I, everybody hit everything, I, Ms. Lewis really hit the point that I wanted to take home. There are legal issues around granting the, this, uh, appeal, uh, that have real impacts on this community. And that, that's a big concern of mine. We, these zoning lo- laws have been in place for a long time. When you purchase a property, you know exactly what you're, you can do on it. And I hope the neighbors, when they purchase their properties, investigate what's around them and what could happen in front of them. You know, I, you hit everything, the, the ADA access, you hit that, that was a big concern of mine. You know, the, again, the property's not owned by the city, and so we don't really have, uh, we can't restrict you outside what the zoning restricts you today. And then that's another issue I kinda have with, with putting these new restrictions on you right away.
I appreciate that.
Uh, and so, because we don't have anything to legally do that yet. Yeah, but that is being, uh, investigated. We set that down to planning, I don't know, a year ago, something like that. And so, and you, you guys beat the traffic to death, uh, the views, and I agree, I drive that street all the time when I'm heading down to the harbor, and you're right, you can't see anything unless you're next to an empty lot. And what, I, I believe, uh, Chart House is only about one story above, above street level. So I know there're gonna be impacts, it's unfortunate when, when you have, uh, an empty lot, it's a beautiful view lot, we all know it, and that's probably why you purchased it to build a hotel on it, um, that's going to impact our neighbors.
Yeah.
And they've, they've been there a long time, they've enjoyed that view for, for years and years. And it's unfortunate that that happens, that when somebody finally does come with a good project, that it will impact them. Uh, however, i- it's how do you balance whose rights are more important than the other one, and legally, your rights are very, very important, especially since you didn't ask for a variance. Uh, and you're actually below 35 feet at street level. That was important to me. We, we measure max height from what's at lowest point on the, on the lot, is that correct? Sean?
In the- And for parcels that are applicable to the Dana Point zoning code, yes, you are correct. Here, it's, it's slightly different. It's from five feet out from the project, uh, from the project exterior walls, but it is consistent with those requirements.
Okay. All right. So, in, in the issue with having a pool deck on a roof and serving breakfast out there, I could see that being an issue if that was open to the public and you have a lot of guests out there. It's not. It's not someplace that, you know, are, the neighbors are gonna be able to walk across the street and have a cocktail after work. So, uh, I, I don't believe that the noise is gonna be at a level that exceeds, and I believe we're 23 decimals below what the max level is for the city anyway. Uh, and somebody, where I live, I, I get a lot of street noise, and I have to deal with that just because I chose to live there. So I, I, I understand that, I, I absolutely understand the, your, the peacefulness and tranquility that you have over there. However, when, when you have these types of uses allowed, like you said, the restaurants are much louder, are gonna be much louder than this, and, and that's a, that's great that you're using a less intense use, but I, I just don't see how we could, how, how we could grant this appeal. So, uh, with that, uh, that's my point. And, and thank you for doing all the hard work. I love the living rooftop, that takes away a lot of the impacts every time I see that. Trying to blend the, the new, the new construction in with the existing landscape is always an important thing for me, so, thank you. Mr. Exor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I have a question, I'll direct to the city attorney. Uh, as I think about this more, and you bring up a point that we haven't made a decision on a citywide view ordinance, uh, yet. So if we imposed, uh, a height, a height limit on, uh, on this particular project, and then didn't for the rest of the city, obviously, we'd be treating this project differently, or vice versa. If we did not impose it on, uh, the applicant, uh, but then did pass a view ordinance for the, the rest of the city, I assume that would mean they would not then have to comply with the city's view ordinance. Is that correct?
The conditions for this project will be unique to this project. So it, it doesn't matter what you end up doing with a view ordinance. If, uh, your conditions of approval are, um, viewed by the courts as, in essence, a contractual agreement, if the applicant's willing to agree to those conditions, and apparently they are, um, then, uh, they're enforceable, and you don't have to worry about if, for instance, in the future, you don't adopt a view ordinance, or you don't adopt an ordinance that relates to plant heights. Conversely, if you were to adopt, uh, an ordinance related to plant heights where you said, I'll make something up that, you know, no tree can be more than 25 feet, um, they would be, uh, a legal non-conforming use based on what you're proposing now, and they'd be allowed to go to 35 feet. So what happens, i- they're gonna be vested, uh, in, in their rights regardless of what you do, uh, in the future with view ordinances, but they'll also be limited in the future by agreeing to this in the event that you don't adopt a view ordinance.
Okay, so I think I understand, basically, there's not a, there's not a precedent being set when, if we ever do, uh, discuss to adopt a view ordinance, to argue this was done, you must do, you are now required to act in conformance with what you did. This is just a project-specific, uh, item. Is that a-
That's correct.
Summary?
Okay. And if the council does go forward, um, with this proposal, I think your resolution should be, um, vague enough and broad enough to give staff a little bit of discretion. I have to tell you, there's a lot of issues on this project that I spent a lot of time preparing for tonight on. I didn't spend a second looking at landscaping, no idea it was gonna be an issue, it's, you know, you just get caught by surprise sometimes. It worries me that you adopt, uh, something now that might conflict with other, um, conditions. So, uh, you know, I think staff, um, and I certainly understand the intent of what you're doing, and I think you should give us the discretion to draft a, a condition that's consistent with your intent, um, so that if we go through this and realize that there's some conflicting issues, that we can try and make it all work.
So does the, the motion as it stands now does, or does not do that?
Well, nobody, the, the motion was to, you know, limit the, the tree heights, or the plant heights to 35 feet. I think that we understand that, but we have to actually draft an actual condition. You know, there's, you know, a lot of verbers that goes into that. So I guess what I'm asking you to do as part of your motion is just to make it clear, you're giving staff the discretion to draft the condition language that's consistent with your intent, but we have to come up with the actual, specific language.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wyatt?
So, uh, I wanna come back to, um, Mr. Munoz's point, I'm gonna tell you, there's a couple other things I did wanna go back over. So, uh, in terms of, um, of a point that Carol, Cal- Carol Kelly brought up on public comments about how we've had, uh, some, some, uh, issues behind Canon's where the, you know, the, uh, gazebo is and so forth, you did make the point that this particular, uh, site, uh, in fact, had incredibly good footing, it was unrelated to the further up the bluff, but I think we've sort of brushed over that. I think I wanna reemphasize that I'm correct about that.
You are 100% correct.
Okay. And then one other, uh, thing that we didn't, uh, discuss in length. So right now, obviously, all the rain that falls on this lot, either soaks in or runs off the, and, and, and down the, and down the bluff, uh, when you put a building on there, the, the bulk of the rain's gonna end up on the roof. And, and that has to be, has to be routed somewhere for there. So as part of the overall building standards, we have to deal with that runoff. So I'm assuming this project is dealt with making sure that runoff, in fact, reduces the amount of runoff down the hillside and, and the chance of erosions, is that correct?
You are 100% again correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now I wanna go back to, uh, to amend my amended motion to say that, um, uh, that we want the, um, landscaping to stay within the 30-foot, um, height envelope that's set for the building height and, uh, and direct staff, um, to amend the conditions to dictate, uh, or to describe how that might be, uh, met. Is that adequate?
It is, yeah. It's difficult to have a condition that says something like, you know, a condition will be, um, if the landscape, so for instance, uh, we're just looking at condition 71, which really deals with landscape plan, we could add to the end of that something to the effect of, uh, you know, heights of all landscaping shall not exceed the 35-foot building, um, building limitation. I think that'll be okay. Uh, this is actually what I was concerned about.
There's an envelope that's, if you look at the plans that describe where the roof line is, front to back and whatever, and basically what you would like to say is, it was important that the building not go above that envelope. And as we landscape it, it would be important that we didn't put landscaping that went well above that envelope either. But how that would be met on a basis, I think we certainly would want staff to.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable that we can just amend condition seventy-one now that I've had a chance to take a quick look at it. Simply add this thirty-five-foot limitation. I was concerned before that there might be a specific landscape palette that was already being approved. And I can tell you, I'm not a landscaper, but look at those palm trees. If those are already approved and they're supposed to be the trees, they're going to be more than thirty-five feet. So that was, I was just getting a little worried there might be some conflicts, but the way this is drafted is fine.
Okay.
Just add that language to seventy-one.
Great, thank you.
I think that just answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Will we take a vote? Oh, he actually have an amended motion, an amendment to an amendment. Hold on, let me get you.
I'll second that.
Okay, got it, all right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote unless there's any more comments. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead and vote.
Mr. Mayor. We're voting on
We're, okay. We're voting on the amended motion that will add a condition, another condition that none of the landscape can be higher than thirty-five feet. Envelope.
But we're, it's the entire motion.
The entire motion. But that was the final amendment to deny the appeal. And to amend that another landscape. Yeah, his amendment was just amending the heights to. No, we're, we're voting on the amendment motion. And then the main motion, depending on how this goes, will be voted on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that passes four-one with Mayor Miller in dissent. Okay. That's it. Thank you very much. And they'll move us on to item thirteen. Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm a little confused. The amended motion, and then we were talking about there's a main motion. So the whole thing became one motion to
Only you only go back to the main motion if the amended motion fails.
Okay, so we just approved the hotel with that extra condition.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call for a five-minute comfort break. So we recess for five minutes. We'll be back at eight fifteen.
Back to have that discussion here this after this this evening. With that, I'm good. That's my staff report and it's here for discussion again. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments? Thank you. We got quite a few. Our first public speaker is Terry Walsh, followed by Carol Kelly and Cindy Fleming.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Terry Walsh. I'm a resident of Dana Point. 14 feet, 16 feet, 17 feet, 18 feet. Let's just all take a vote and decide what we want to do. Um, my opinion is that we had to stick with the 18 feet simply because that was the recommendation, strong, strong recommendation from a urban planning consultant that we spent a lot of money, we, the city and the in the Town Center Subcommittee spent, uh, developing the original plan. However, if you choose to go forward with this to a vote or whatever, uh, consider two things. Um, thing one is Pandora's box. And Joe sort of touched on Mr. Miller, Mary Miller sort of touched on it just a minute ago. And secondly, it's cost and that's kind of where I I'm stuck at the moment. Pandora's box, there's a lot of things that need to be considered in addition to just the heights. I think it's a well-meaning and well-thought, uh, uh, you know, let's go to 14 feet. It gives us all this flexibility and whatnot. I've heard those arguments. As I said, nothing's persuaded me that Boris's, uh, input is incorrect. Um, what about setbacks and step backs? How's that going to work with 14 feet? Or if we make it 12 feet? Does anybody know? I don't know. I'm not a urban planner. Um, what about the other issues that maybe, uh, come up? Parking has certainly been discussed and we've had parking studies and ordinances and propositions. And I submit to you that we have yet to come up with a parking solution. And I think that the, uh, one of the key reasons that some of the smaller lots haven't been developed is a parking solution. You know, we have numbers, but I don't know. It was 1.2 per bedroom and 1.8 for rest. Who knows? Um, if you're going to develop a small lot, people ask me, what is my vision for the small lots in the Town Center Subcommittee? And the quick answer is a smaller building. The second one is costs. Um, I think there'd be an enormous cost to open this up at this point for just this one issue without going through a whole bunch of issues. On the original Town Center Subcommittee, we had two people from the City Council. We had one planning commissioner, we had the Director of Public Works, uh, the Director of Community Development and a whole lot of staff hours that just did great work for the for the committee, doing research and study and all kinds of things. To get there, you got to go through the Planning Commission, the City Council, the Coastal Commission, and then somewhere sneak in there a vote of the people. That's going to cost us about a quarter million dollars. And I don't think that just the 14 feet, 18 feet, uh, is worth going forward and spending that kind of money on at this point in time. That's just my opinion. I could be wrong.
Thank you. Carol Kelly.
I'd like to support, uh, Terry Walsh. Do not adopt document A. I think, um, the original Town Center Plan, they had consultants, they had professional city staff, they had the public, they spent a lot of time on this and they decided that the 18 foot was the most reasonable footage. And to to spend $87,000 to change it down to 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 14 feet is is ridiculous. I mean, that $87,000 we could use to build a parking structure. So I I think it's a waste of money. I think you should just keep it as is. And who is the person behind the chamber that wanted this change? You know, is is there an ulterior motive that they wanted the 14 feet because they wanted to build more rooftops or what? So, uh, do not adopt document A.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Followed by Michael Fox and Jason Check. Ms. Fleming first, yeah.
Good evening, Council members. I'm Cindy Fleming, a 34-year resident of Dana Point. And I'm here tonight with Richard Price, uh, also resident of Dana Point, a local landscape architect. Tonight, we represent the Architectural Guild of South Orange County, a group of design professionals, including architects, landscape architects, planners, uh, and planners living and/or working within the communities of Dana Point, San Clemente, and San Juan Capistrano. The Guild's mission is to be a design resource, uh, to advocate, to inspire, to educate, and to inform the public and municipalities regarding planning, design, and building to enrich the quality of life for the communities that we serve. The Guild wants to thank Michael Fox from the Chamber of Commerce for speaking with our group about the Chamber's request for a ballot measure to, uh, decrease the required ground floor retail heights, um, from 18 feet to 14 feet minimum. After discussion, Guild members in attendance voted unanimously to urge the Dana Point City Council not to put this item on a ballot measure at this time. The reasons are as follows. One, we feel that any change to the current Town Center Plan is premature given that it is stems from a reaction to the very first development approved and its current appearance at only the framing stage. Number two, the argument that a reduced ground floor height will allow manipulation of roof lines and the addition of sloped roofs is void given that the current rain tree development has incorporated sloped roofs in limited areas while complying with the 18-foot minimum height. Number three, architects are adept at correcting issues of scale and the 18-foot ground floor height does not need to appear as it as out of scale as the current framing does. If city planning staff would like advice as to how to encourage good design for storefronts with these heights, the Architectural Guild would be happy to provide examples and advice as how this can be accomplished as needed. Number four, the framers of the 2008 Town Center Plan spent a lot of time figuring out best practices that would encourage a vibrant streetscape in the town center. They chose 18 feet as ground floor heights because it wasn't and continues to be the most common minimum height for retailers in the United States. Why wouldn't you want to encourage, to ensure that the Town Center retail spaces attract the most and highest quality retailers possible? Number five, while many are opposed to the scale and massing of the current rain tree development in relation to existing historic buildings, the 40-foot height is what has always been envisioned since 2008 uh, and has never been discussed being reduced. Since the 40-foot height limit does not change with a requested reduction in ground floor height requirement, it's unlikely that developers would reduce the height of the buildings in Town Center.
Ms. Fleming, can you wrap up your three minutes?
Yes, I can. Should it be determined that this issue merits further discussion? The Guild, uh, strongly suggests that a work group be assembled and include members of the original 2008 Town Center Plan, local professional architects and land planners, as well as city planning staff, to thoroughly assess the merit and potential impacts before putting it on the ballot. We do not feel that this can happen in time for a March ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Fox, followed by Jason Check. Excuse me, and Wayne Rayfield.
Uh, evening, um, Mayor, City Council. So, um, yeah, I represent the the Dana Point Chamber for the Directors, which represents about, um, nearly 400 businesses in Dana Point. And I just want to first, I think, clarify our initial intention, which was basically to initiate discussion of this point. I think it certainly did that. It wasn't to make an amendment. Um, that kind of went a step further than even we had initially intended. I also want to clarify our initial intention that I, you know, I do think the 14 to 18 feet range would be good for business, good for smaller lots, flexibility. And I'm just re-articulating, uh, the the initial points. It would allow developers to reduce the height of the ground floor retail, these better architecture, roof line articulation, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and, you know, be more, um, in scale with pedestrian-friendly, human-scaled ground floor. Um, so, um, you know, there's there's a reason. Um, I think it's kind of evolved into, um, a discussion of looking more inclusively at these issues. And, um, I think, you know, I can't really take a position because, again, I only represent the board, which represents the membership. And at at this point, it's kind of a speculative discussion. So I I think, you know, after today's discussion, I, you know, I'll be glad to take this to, um, the membership in a simple poll if if, uh, where that has pros and cons behind looking at an inclusive range of these issues. Um, getting Town Center Committee back together to to really look at them and then take it to the ballot. Um, but but without polling our membership, I can't really stand behind it with one position for or against. Um, you know, I I hate to even speculate what the membership would would say. If if the membership, um, is in favor of of it, you know, I'll gladly, uh, submit a letter, um, you know, that has the full weight of 400 businesses behind it. Um, but at this point, you know, I I need to put it forth to the membership. So I think that's all I really want to say at this point.
Thank you. Jason Check.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, staff. Um, I'm here tonight. My name's Jason Check. I'm a former resident of Dana Point, uh, currently a business owner and property owner in the downtown area. Our headquarters is in the Town Center. Um, company is Rain Tree Partners. And I I brought some pictures, which I submitted to Rachel, but, uh, just give them to the clerk, please. So I'd like to first say I agree with most of the comments that were just made. Um, I think that the specific issue of the commercial heights in the ground floor in the Town Center area is something that, uh, I personally support in terms of having optionality to go from 14 feet to 18 feet. I think in any plan, rigid requirements oftentimes lead to unintended consequences. And that's where having flexibility is great. Um, in our case, um, if we had the option to have a lower commercial height, I think it would have been an opportunity to create a different roof line. Um, I think it would have also not been a limiting factor for the type of retailers that will come into a downtown area like this. I don't disagree at all about the the point that Cindy made about 18 feet being a very attractive ceiling height for commercial centers across the U.S. I do disagree as it relates to a Town Center in a small-scale downtown. I think our project, uh, commercial volume does appear very large. We're doing what we can with storefront to bring down, you know, the approach, the pedestrian experience. Um, but that 18-foot requirement is significant and it also, um, has some constructibility constraints that make it just more costly to build. Um, higher scaffolding, thicker concrete walls to support a concrete mezzanine. These things are obviously cost issues, um, which, you know, cost more to construct and therefore, um, impact, you know, what we have to charge and rent to attract businesses to town. Um, so it's just a point I'd like to make. I brought these pictures to illustrate a couple of points. The first one is a lot. Uh, this is a 5,000-square-foot lot that is just behind Subway. This is actually a property we own. And I'd like to draw your attention to the transformer box, the fire hydrant, the, um, street light and the palm tree. And given that, you know, these installations are in place, our ability to develop this 5,000-square-foot lot as a standalone property is extremely limited. We'd likely try to find, uh, an approach or a deviation from the plan to allow us to enter into the site, which would require a city vote. And the likelihood of an owner of one of these small properties going forward with the effort, time, cost, et cetera, involved to, um, actually fund that.
Mr. Check, you wrap up.
Okay. Uh, to fund that route is is significant. Um, and I think that's a big limitation. I do support a wholesale review of the Town Center Plan now that we have developments coming into town. I did note that in Terry's comments, I didn't hear a developer or a contractor that was a part of that committee. And I think that's extremely important to look at the actual constructibility issues of the plan. There's a lot of other pictures in here. I'd be love, I'd be happy to take questions about the other images in here.
Thank you. Uh, Wayne Rayfield, followed by Jim Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable Council members. Uh, my name is Wayne Rayfield and I'm a long-term, 45 years or so, property owner and/or resident of Dana Point. I, this issue concerns me and I thought maybe it might be a help tonight to review how we got to where we are on this issue of the structural ceiling height on the first floor, not the finished ceiling height, but the structural ceiling height. Finished ceiling height would be four or more feet lower than 18 feet. You may recall that, uh, the city hired an international, internationally renowned, I should say, architectural urban planning group by the name of the Roma Group out of San Francisco. Their principal in that group, Boris Dromov, worked with the Town Center Subcommittee, which had 15 members on it, 13 of which were residents, some retired, some still in business. There was a landscape architect. There was a urban planner, interestingly enough, and our own city staff. Um, we also had two electeds. One was Laura Anderson, then the mayor pro 10, and myself. The committee spent a great deal of time, energy, looking and analyzing the various proposals that came to us. You may know that we had over 30 public meetings and a plethora of individual meetings going to individuals' homes and the like. The 18-foot structural high first-floor ceiling was not a number picked out of the air. We analyzed the recommendation of Boris Dromov. We looked at what other buildings are doing, like the Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica, which he designed, his firm did. And we're convinced, based on that analysis, that that's what we had to do. You'll be happy to know we even had story polls as we looked at the implications of that ceiling height. And one of the recommendations was 50 high, 50-feet-high buildings, not 60, as someone has said. But when we looked at that with the story polls, we said, yep, maximum of 40 feet, three stories, and an 18-foot structural first floor.
If you're going to move forward on this, I would suggest you have to have considerable analytical work done on the implications, considerable public outreach.
The Coastal Commission, in fact, said about Town Center that the public outreach is what contributed greatly to their approval. We had over 300 pages of print, flyers, and educational programs for our residents. And one last thought. If you do drop that ceiling, I, height, I firmly believe that the total height should be dropped by a comparable amount. Because the only reason people really accepted 40 feet was they understood the need for the 18-foot structural, not finished, first-floor height. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you. Jim Miller.
Okay, I guess I'm at my last up. Okay, Jim Miller, resident of Dana Point. Um, I was a member of the Town Center Subcommittee and I'd like the Council to take its time and make sure that whatever is voted on, that they address all the issues of the Town Center. So it can be developed as the, as what was our vision was as a sound Town Center Subcommittee. Our vision was to see individual lots being developed. So before any vote is taken, let's consider other issues that should also be considered. Issues such as a parking solution to allow individual lot development, three stories versus four stories within a 40-foot height limit, assigned parking for residents, should 14, should a 14-foot first floor mean a 35-foot building height. Finally, I'm not opposed to projects like Prado West or Union Bank Lot, but that was just not our vision and we didn't want to see that. I don't want to see all of Town Center be that way.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any more public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to Council for a motion. And I'm going to mo, make a motion not to approve or deny this just to 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 discuss this a little bit farther within the Council, so. Ms. McSor.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
Yes, I would make an amended motion to deny it.
Okay. Mr. White.
I will second amended motion.
Takes me a minute to get these mics turned on. Okay, so you have a motion and a second to deny, but amended. Is it substitute motion, correct? Okay, the substitute motion. All right, I'll bring it back to Council for discussion. Mr. Federico, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you all for the comments. Uh, I I think I've said this before. Um, what I feel about the heights is less important than how I feel about honoring the Town Center Plan. Um, and I do think in time, when the time is right, we need to put a group together to look at the intended and unintended consequences of the Town Center Plan and and look at, uh, how we might tweak it to, uh, to make sure we get what the residents want. Um, but for now, I think we neither have the staff capacity to do that nor do we have the real, uh, a, a enough completion of of projects down there to get a sense of of what, uh, we might be dealing with and might want to change. So while I'm not opposed to looking at the Town Center Plan through through a a community group, uh, whether that, whether that's chartered by the chamber, uh, with help from residents and and the people that were involved the first time in doing it, uh, and and or if it's, uh, whatever group does it. Um, I I think we do need to look at it at the right time, uh, but I don't think now is it.
Thank you. Ms. McSor, do you have anything?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I do, uh, I agree with with the comments of of the speakers. Uh, I agree that, uh, we shouldn't try to put this on, uh, for the primary, uh, in March, especially just putting through one issue and the costs that's involved with it. I spoke about this last meeting when we were, uh, discussing this item. Uh, but I do think, and the suggestion was made by several speakers and I think alluded to by, uh, Councilman Federico, that, uh, it is time to get the gang back together, so to speak, and take another look at it. If we're going, if we're really going to look at, uh, what the effect of the Town Center Plan has been on our city, uh, how the the effect of the amendment to the Town Center Plan has affected the original vision. Uh, if we're really going to take a look at these things, we need to do it as a whole, not one piece at a time. So I do think it's a good idea to reconstitute the Town Center Subcommittee, uh, give them the task of analyzing these issues. Uh, has the original vision been carried out? Has it not been carried out? Uh, did the amendments help, uh, achieve the vision of the original Town Center Plan? Did they thwart the, uh, original vision of the Town Center Plan? Uh, take a look at it holistically and give us a recommendation if anything needs to be fixed. And if so, bring it together as one complete package. Uh, certainly, uh, we're not prepared to do it in the, um, in the March primary. But, uh, I think since we're not reinventing the wheel, we're not creating the Town Center Plan for the first time, uh, I think it would be reasonable that, uh, to task the reconstituted Town Center Subcommittee to bring something back for us to consider to put on the November ballot for 2020. So, uh, I agree, I I think the, uh, I guess I would make a, I don't think it needs to be a substitute motion. I think I agree the motion was to deny, uh, the recommended action is to proceed with the initiate, with a council-initiated ballot measure. Uh, I agree with that. Uh, so I would, uh, offer an amendment to it to, uh, reconstitute the Town Center Subcommittee, uh, to look into the issues as I, as I just spoke about.
I'll go ahead and second that. Um, Mr. White, do you have anything?
I do. So I, um, you know, I agree with the idea that if we're going to modify the Town Center Plan, we have to actually go through the effort of modifying the Town Center Plan. Um, so I have a, um, couple of things. First of all, uh, in terms of urgency and priority and staff time, I I don't think it comes to the the top of what we have to work for. We are, um, we're in the process of trying to get the Doheeny Village Plan done. We have to finish that. There's a lot of staff work yet to be done to realize that plan. I think that's really at the top of our list. Um, we've made a commitment to redo the general plan that was passed in 1991. It's well out of date. Uh, there's a considerable, uh, amount of staff work to do that. That sort of sets the broader plan for the city. Um, we've started to put together the $2 million that will cost to do that roughly. Uh, and and the staff effort is is enormous to do that. And that's why we put it off for years and years and years. In fact, you know, nearly 30 years, right? Um, so, uh, that's the second priority. And then we just got the, uh, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Numbers, at least preliminary, back. So now we have to look at updating our plans to decide how we're going to add the, whatever the number is, 600 to whatever housing units to our plan and make sure that we're prepared to respond to that. That's a priority that's going to be driven, is driven by the state and we have to respond to. So all of those actions that take the same staff, the same people on our staff, are much higher priorities than than, um, where we are in revisiting the Town Center Plan. So, um, so I think, first of all, that getting it for November, uh, those stand in the way. Um, my second, um, thing on getting it for November, I would, um, I would guess, although, uh, Councilmember McSor said we're not reinventing the wheel, I would guess that it would be a struggle even starting now to get it on the ballot by November 2022. Um, with the amount of work and the number of meetings that have to happen and the considerations and how we bring the people in, uh, that might be possible, but it's not trivial to even do it by then. So doing it, um, earlier than that with the other things on the agenda and staff priorities, I would not want to redirect staff away from Doheeny Village, the general plan, or dealing with the Rena numbers, uh, to start working on this at this time. I think it needs to be put off until after those, at least. So that's my input on.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. Okay, there are, boy, so many reasons I oppose the amended motion to, uh, reconvene a Subcommittee. We we haven't even had the first project occupied yet in our plan and and we're already talking about redoing it. We had the chamber come forward with what I would charitably describe as tepid support of of, uh, this, uh, alteration to it. You know, we just sat here and told residents who told us, you know, that we, that that we're impacting their homes, their views. And we're like, well, you know, this is, this is how it's zoned and sorry. But now we have this entire plan. But now we have this entire plan that took years and, you know, appreciate the speakers talking about that, a lot of money, um, a lot of meetings. We haven't even seen the first project from it yet. And we're, we're already now because some, somebody from the chamber said, you know, we need to relook at this. We're already falling all over ourselves here to, oh, okay, let's redo it for you. Well, I, I, I have a big problem with that. Much like we told the residents, people who have lots there, they bought those lots knowing what the parking requirements were. Those zoning requirements have been there for years. So if you bought a small lot and you had a parking issue, uh, you know, you knew it was there. This is what we told our residents. And, uh, the 2008 Town Center Plan's been there for years and bought knowing that, hey, this is, this is how it was going to look. We were going to have these 18-foot, it was going to be three stories and it was going to be 40 feet. So I have, you know, a lot of problems now sinking staff time, time for all these people who spent hours and hours, hundreds of hours on the original plan and the money the city plant spent to redo a plan that we don't even know why we're redoing it or what should be, we should be redoing. And, and I hear that we're redoing it potentially because it costs, it costs money to build it this way. Well, my feeling is, okay, if it costs money to build it this way and we're eating into some profits, then why should the residents be subsidizing the cost of redoing a plan that has already been approved by a city council unanimously? We had a whole Measure H over it. We voted, we spent time and money on that. I, if it's because the bottom line needs to be tweaked a little bit, well, then I don't think the residents should be the people subsidizing that cost. So, um, for the reasons that we haven't even seen the first project yet, this was the zoning and the plan that was in effect, and, um, the cost of it should not be borne by the, uh, by the residents who are not asking for this. This is coming from businesses. Uh, I would vote strongly no on reconvening the Subcommittee at this point.
Mr. Federico?
I, uh, I also oppose reconvening the Subcommittee now because I just don't believe our staff, uh, have the capacity to, to handle this and we're, we're shuffling priorities on them. We, we've gave our city manager priorities for the staff for this year, earlier this, this year, and to throw something on this now is going to push something else off. And I think there's time to reevaluate this and bring this back when the, the staff has time to do it now. Like I said earlier, if the chamber, who also has a lot of turnover right now, but if the chamber wants to take this on and, and bring this and start working on this, I think we'd be happy to have them do some of that, or we can do it when the time, when the capacity exists and it's a priority for us. But I would say that I do think it's very different than, uh, Ms. Lewis's point about, uh, approving something where a builder wants to build something when there's zoning. In this case, the voters would be considering allowing builders to build something smaller. I think they're, they're apples and oranges. In fact, they're, they're almost polar opposites. But I do understand it is in fact a change to the zoning, uh, that exists and everyone understands it exists. Um, I just think that the Town Center Plan, uh, is something to look at. Uh, and again, we have the opportunity to look at it, uh, because it is a specific plan for intended and unintended consequences. I just don't think we have the capacity to do that correctly now without throwing the staff off of, uh, other competing priorities.
Thank you. Okay, um, so this is an issue that, that's been, I've been, I've been hearing a lot about it from residents, how large these, these new developments are. Union Bank, ACE, Rain Tree, these are our large developments and we have these small lots. Uh, and I hear it all the time, people want to see smaller development. And this is the chance to take a look at that. That doesn't mean, if, if we're going to reconvene the Town Center Committee, and I think we should, uh, it doesn't mean that we're going to redo the entire plan. It could be something as simple and it'll be up to them what they want to bring back. But, uh, as simple as, let's take a look at the smaller lots and maybe change the rules on those lots and see if we can do something with those instead of letting them sit there vacant or have another developer come in and buy them all up and parcel them together and make something large that, that people obviously have talked about tonight. That wasn't the vision of what the Town Center was going to be, but it's what it's turning out to be. Uh, I think it is time, it's been four years, um, since the, the amendment to Town Center has ta, has taken place. We've had one approved development in those four years, uh, and it's a large development. It might be time to take a look at if you, you know, if you're going to do a certain lot size, maybe we have requirements on certain lot sizes. If you have a small lot, maybe we can, we can change the requirements on those lots and put that to a vote of the people. That's what's going to have to, have to be done anyway. Uh, it might be time to take a look at that. I do support, uh, reconvening the Town Center Committee. I would like to see it back on the 2020 ballot, but it may not be able to be on the 2020, depending on what their recommendations are. Um, you know, does the staff have time for this? You know, Doeheny Village has got to get done, we all know that. We're looking at doing the LCPA on that in 2020, in November of 2020 as well, or towards the end of 2020. Uh, it might be a good time, since we only get a limited number of LCPA amendments or LCP amendments. Anyway, it's, it's better to combine as many into one amendment as possible. So I do support putting them back together and bringing back some ideas on how we can improve the Town Center Plan to get back to the original idea. Changing from 18 to 14 may not be part of it. It may be on a larger lot, on a small lot, it may be. And it may make sense to do that, but let's take a look at it. Um, we don't have to say one size fits all down there. We can do it on different lot sizes. So, uh, I think we should go ahead with it. Um, we could work with staff on what type, how much time they need. Put it back together if they, if the chamber wants to, to go ahead and run with this and put together the committee. I'm not saying that we should send 10 staffers over there, maybe a planning commissioner and, and our community development director or somebody like that, so they can actually start talking about the impacts on zoning, uh, and what it means to the community. So I will support the amendment. Doesn't look like it's going to matter though, because I've heard three people say no. But I think it's a good thing for the city that we should move forward with it and let staff decide if they're going to have time for it with everything that's going on. As far as the general plan amendment, we absolutely need to get that done, but quite frankly, we just don't have the money to do it right now. And we may not have it next year either. So I don't want to put off doing something important, as important as this, based on, we have to get the general plan done. We will start that as soon as we have the money to start it. So, uh, that's it. I'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Mayor, can you, uh, read the motion?
Uh, the motion right now is to deny putting this on the, uh, the March primary, reconstituting the Town Center Committee to have them come back hopefully by, or actually by 2020, by the November 2020 ballot. I believe that's correct, correct? 3-2, it fails. All right. That brings us back to the original motion, which was to deny putting it up. We'll go ahead and vote on that. And that passes 5-0. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for the time. Thanks for all the, of our residents to come out and talk about this. It's something we'll take a look at in the future. There's no new business tonight. Uh, that brings us to the council reports. Mr. Federico?
Madam Clerk, I've turned in my list of meetings, um, and I, I, I would be more than happy to support, uh, working with the Chamber of Commerce if they want to bring back a committee to, or, or form a committee to study this. I just don't want to commit staff resources to it right now, so I, I, I will, I would personally offer my time to, uh, to help with that. As far as, uh, uh, reports to the council, I, we, we had an Orange County Housing Finance Trust Board meeting, uh, last week and, uh, Ms. Lewis, you brought up in the past, uh, funding and budget for the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. We discussed at the la, we passed a budget, uh, they, we, the board passed a budget for this year, uh, for the Orange County Housing Finance Trust, basically no cost to the city because the county's picking up the entire tab with, uh, subsidized by some grant money that the, the trust has already received. And we, the trust is working on a budget for next year with a couple of different possible models, depending on how much grant money is available, what it would cost member cities. Uh, the numbers are very, very minimal. Uh, so I, I, I'll bring that back, uh, so, in plenty of time. And I told the, the, the trust, uh, that we need to know before six months or grant waivers to cities to be able to leave prior to, uh, taking on any sort of financial burden,
Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. McSor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt?
I have turned in my list of meetings to the city clerk and I have nothing else to report.
Okay. I have not turned in my list of meetings. I'm sure I'll get a reminder of that by tomorrow. Uh, I will get those in. We have been working diligently at OCTA to deal with some issues that have come up around, uh, hot lanes, for those that's high-capacity toll lanes. Uh, there, there's a presentation that we're going to receive, I believe, next week or the first meeting in, uh, or two weeks, or the first meeting in December, that'll talk about Caltrans' general plan and what they want to do. The, the reason we bring that up are the hot lanes would actually conceivably take over an HOV lane, uh, that was paid for with taxpayer funding and M2 funds, that is not part of what M2 was about. And so we have to have a discussion on what Caltrans' ultimate goal is, uh, and then explain a little bit about a hot lane. You can still have an HOV component of that. Three or greater will travel free, two, two plus could actually get a reduced rate. One is you'd actually be paying to drive the lane. So, uh, there's a lot to be discussed about that. I just want to keep people informed, especially with the widening going on right now from Oso to, uh, the, the Y up in Irvine in Lake Forest, uh, and also the extension going, going north from the 55 to county line. So, uh, just to keep, keep everybody up informed about what's going on there with the transportation going on in South County. Uh, with that, I will bring it to Mr. Denny. Do you have a report?
No, sir. Nothing tonight.
Mr. Munoz?
Evening.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to adjournment. The next regular meeting in the city council will be November 19th, 2019 at 5:00 PM in the city council chamber located at 33282 Golden Lantern, Suite 210 Dana Point.